Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kader.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the August 15, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kader. Vice Chair Strickland. Commissioner Bashir Tosh. Commissioner Biddle. Commissioner Core. Commissioner Coman. Commissioner Neal. Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This Commission provides an opportunity for public participation throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the requests. Planning staff will then present the facts about the project, along with their recommendation to the Commission, who will approve an item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
Please note, in keeping with the City Council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on Madam Clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Please note, if you are here for consent, public hearing items 5A through 5C, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to do so at a later time. Seeing no speakers, Madam Clerk, Item 3B, please.
Non-Agenda Item 3B, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
Please note, all matters under the Consent Items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless a staff member or a Commissioner requests specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving Consent Items 4A?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Core.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Sorry, can we just go on the record and say who abstained?
Yes, I'm going to read the vote again. Motion passes with Commissioner Bashir Tosh and Commissioner Neal abstaining.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 5, Consent Public Hearing Items.
Now is the time for Consent Public Hearing Items. Please note, if the item is not removed by a Commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the Commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does anyone in the member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing no members of the public, does any Commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing no Commissioners or staff... I'm sorry, Ms. King, it's been a while. If I have a conflict on an item, do I state that now or after I close the hearing?
You state it after you close the hearing, and you say which one you're recusing yourself from.
Fantastic. It's been a bit. Thank you. At this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. I will note, I have a conflict of interest on Item 5A due to source of income, and will be abstaining from voting on Item 5A. With that being said, may I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on consent public hearing items 5A through 5C, with Commissioner Kader abstaining from 5A, incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
So moved.
Commissioner Neal, may I have a second? Commissioner Bashir Tosh. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes to approve Agenda Items 5A, 5B, and 5C, with Chair Kader recusing from Agenda Item 5A.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, There are no non-consent public hearing items.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 7, Reports. I would like to note that there was a late comment letter received for Item 7A, and a copy was provided at your seating area.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your brief report on Item 7A?
Yes, thank you very much. I would ask that the Secretary put up the other slideshow that we have when you're ready. No, that's fine, that's no problem. So in the meantime, though, I would like to recognize we have Della Acosta and Bryce Haney here from our RingCon team. We have also members from RingCon team in the audience, along with city staff who have been working on these land use alternatives. You were provided some information to review. We look forward to a good, healthy discussion. And with that, I will turn it over to Della. First, we may get a little tech services assistance. And I would note that you guys did receive printouts of the slides for note-taking. If there's any questions on that, too, you can take notes as we go along.
Okay, thank you very much for having us here today to talk about the land use alternatives for the Bakersfield General Plan Update. I am going to start us off with just a quick reminder of the bigger picture. We are currently in the midst of updating Bakersfield's general plan, and a part of that process is assessing changes, potential changes, to the general plan land use map. So, the general plan lays out the big picture for what you are trying to achieve as a community in Bakersfield. It serves as the roadmap for developers and for conservation in the city, what to develop and what to conserve. And it contains, in addition to the maps, sets of goals, policies, and implementation actions to guide future decision-making and ensure consistency with the community vision. That'll work two things here. The general plan is guided by state requirements, and we have to address several topics within the general plan. Ones pertinent to this update are housing and land use, vehicle miles traveled, so how trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled through land use and other strategies, addressing climate change and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, addressing environmental justice concerns, providing adaptation and resiliency strategies in response to climate change. are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on Madam Clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak.
Agenda item 3A, public statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Please note, if you are here for consent, public hearing items 5A through 5C, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to do so at a later time. Seeing no speakers, Madam Clerk, item 3B, please.
Non-agenda item 3B, public statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 4, consent calendar items.
Please note, all matters under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless a staff member or commissioner requests specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving consent items 4A?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Core.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Sorry, can we just go on the record and say who abstained?
Yes, I'm going to read the vote again. Motion passes with Commissioner Bashir Tosh and Commissioner Neal abstaining.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 5, consent public hearing items.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. Please note, if the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does anyone in the -- member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing no members of the public, does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Seeing no commissioners or staff. I'm sorry, Ms. King, it's been a while. If I have a conflict on an item, do I state that now or after the -- after I close the hearing?
You state it after you close the hearing, and you say which one you're recusing yourself from.
Fantastic. It's been a bit. Thank you. So at this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. I will note, I have a conflict of interest on item 5A due to source of income, and will be abstaining from voting on item 5A. With that being said, may I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on consent public hearing items 5A through 5C, with Commissioner Kader abstaining from 5A, incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
So move.
Commissioner Neal, may I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bashir Tosh. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Motion passes to approve Agenda items 5A, 5B, and 5C, with Chair Kader recusing from Agenda item 5A.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 6, there are no non-consent public hearing items.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 7, reports. I would like to note that there was a late comment letter received for item 7A, and a copy was provided at your seating area.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your brief report on item 7A?
Yes, thank you very much. I would ask that the secretary put up the other slideshow that we have when you're ready. No, that's fine, that's no problem. So in the meantime, though, I would like to recognize we have Della Acosta and Bryce Haney here from our RingCon team. We have also members from RingCon team in the audience, along with city staff, who have been working on these land use alternatives. You were provided some information to review. We look forward to a good, healthy discussion. And with that, I will turn it over to Della. First, we may get a little tech services assistance. And I would note that you guys did receive printouts of the slides for note-taking. If there's any questions on that, too, you can take notes as we go along.
Thank you very much for having us here today to talk about the land use alternatives for the Bakersfield General Plan update. I am going to start us off with just a quick reminder of the bigger picture. We are currently in the midst of updating Bakersfield's general plan, and a part of that process is assessing changes, potential changes, to the general plan land use map. So the general plan lays out the big picture for what you are trying to achieve as a community in Bakersfield. It serves as the roadmap for developers and for conservation in the city, what to develop and what to conserve. And it contains, in addition to the maps, sets of goals, policies, and implementation actions to guide future decision-making and ensure consistency with the community vision. That'll work two things here. The general plan is guided by state requirements, and we have to address several topics within the general plan. Ones pertinent to this update are housing and land use, vehicle miles traveled, so how trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled through land use and other strategies, addressing climate change and reducing greenhouse gas emissions, addressing environmental justice concerns, providing adaptation and resiliency strategies in response to climate change, integrating complete streets where possible, streamlining development approval, and complying with the general plan guidelines. We are currently wrapping up the land use alternatives process as part of this project and have started work on potential strategies to include as policy. I have seen a couple of you at a workshop we held on Saturday, so thank you. And we also have just a note, we have a survey up on the website now regarding the policy strategy, so we are, as we are wrapping up these land use alternatives. I do want to take a moment just to outline how this portion of the project response relates to the housing element update that is also ongoing. So the housing element is unique among the chapters of the general plan, as you are probably aware. It is the only element that is required to be updated on a specific schedule and has to be certified by the state. So that is being done as a separate project from the rest of the general plan update. We did, however, incorporate the information from the housing element into these land use alternatives. So the housing sites are shown on the maps that you have in front of you for informational purposes, and we did integrate those sites into the growth projections that we included. We did also add additional housing to these land use alternatives because the general plan is a 20-year timeline, whereas the housing element is an eight-year timeline. So hopefully, that will set you up nicely for future housing element updates. Quick overview of the process on updating the land use alternatives. I will note, we were not necessarily looking at wholesale transformation of Bakersfield. So this was really an alignment with ongoing efforts and with the community vision and the city goals. So the goal we were looking at here was to balance the community vision for the year 2045, which we did as part of the Vision and Guiding Principles, that I'll go into a little more later. We are providing opportunities for future quality jobs and housing, and, as I mentioned, complying with state requirements around general plans. We did this through, in part, we're updating the land use map that goes into the land use element, and that reflects the community's vision for what they would like the city to be in the next 20 years. And then we modeled the capacity for the resulting population, housing, and jobs that could occur under that land use map. We did incorporate community input. We did extensive community engagement throughout this and incorporated that input into these alternatives. We also looked at the trade-offs of the different approaches. So there are three options, and each of these options kind of weighs the different trade-offs for future growth. As I mentioned, a core foundation of this process is aligning with the community vision, so a reminder of that the Vision and Guiding Principles were established at the beginning of the general plan process. We have a vision statement and Guiding Principles memo up on the website, and we aligned with the vision, which was, "Bakersfield is a resilient and diverse city that cultivates collaboration in order to provide the highest quality of life for its people. We celebrate our diversity and enjoy a deep sense of community that's fostered through the safe and affordable neighborhoods, plentiful parks, and vibrant cultural centers. Natural systems, working lands, and urban life blend together for a thriving economy where high-quality goods and services are accessible through multimodal means, and active lifestyles are supported by urban greenery, clean air, and transformative planning." There are guiding principles that go into more detail with that vision, sustainable living, economic vitality, equitable access to quality services and infrastructure, embracing community diversity and identity, purposeful and cohesive planning, and health, safety, and quality of life. And you can refer to the full memo on the website to get more information on each of those guiding principles. So as I mentioned, we did community engagement to develop these alternatives and incorporated that input into the three options. So there was an online mapping survey that was used to first vet the focus areas that we're dialing in on, and then talk about what the community would like to see in each of those focus areas and their needs. We did two workshops, one in-person workshop and one virtual workshop, to do the same process. We had nine pop-up booths, at least one in each ward, that allowed the community to talk about what they would like to see in each of the focus areas for the alternatives. And then we held seven focus group meetings, which were organized by topic and were an opportunity to talk with key community groups, agencies, and other departments on what their vision for the city is. And the resulting of all of this is updating the land use map. The land use map is the backbone of the land use element, and its purpose is to categorize the types of allowed uses for each parcel. It sits above the zoning ordinance, the zoning map, so the general plan land use designations are more general than the zoning. The zoning gets more down into detail of what uses are allowed on each individual parcel. And our goal in this process was to modernize and simplify the general plan land use map while accommodating this future change that could occur in Bakersfield. The first step to doing this was, we did a wholesale cleanup of the existing land use designations to better simplify and streamline land use. This was really just about looking at what uses are allowed under the different designations and collapsing them so there's just not so many, and making them a little more intuitive for anyone wanting to come in and build something in Bakersfield. The updated designations will help provide more clarity and flexibility under each area, under each land use, and they align more effectively with the zoning ordinance.
I'm going to ask the city attorney. Can -- should I go in? Yes.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Kader. So I'm interested in what the process is going to be here and when we are going to have an opportunity to ask questions. And I'm asking that because I'm uncomfortable getting too far ahead and then going, okay, do you have any questions after we review 44 pages of documents? I'd like to have an understanding of where we'll be able to have an opportunity to ask questions. I know that you want some answers from us later on in the process, but can you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Yes, and I apologize, I should have mentioned that at the beginning. So I have the kind of setup introductory information, and then a break for clarifying questions. Then we go into the alternatives themselves, and a break between each alternative for more clarifying questions. So we would do the introductory and then questions, alternative one, questions, alternative two, questions, alternative three, questions.
Do you all weigh the alternative number one? Is that what you're --
Apologies, all the way to?
Is it 11, alternative? Two, beyond that?
Correct, two, right before alternative one.
Commissioner Coleman. I think it would be slide 23, is that right?
Yeah.
Can you add the presentation?
Oh, yes.
That's also your --
Yeah.
If you have questions, why don't we just have a raise your hand question?
Yeah.
And that's fine, we'll answer it as we go.
Well, that's really why I asked.
Mr. Coleman, raise your hand.
I did have some questions. I did have some questions about the process and the assumptions that were made before you went into the land use plans. That's why I wanted to stop before we get too far along.
If the question is around the process and assumptions for how we develop the land use alternatives, I will touch on that in a few slides.
All right, you let me know when you're ready for questions.
Yeah, can I make a recommendation? It sounds like an overview prior to questions would be really helpful, just so that we can understand the process. I think there's a great time for clarifying questions before you jump into alternatives. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you so much. If you could proceed, that -- thank you, Mr. -- or Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you. So starting on what the process was for the land use alternatives, our first -- oh, yeah. So the first step was choosing focus areas. And the focus areas, I'll talk about in more detail in a moment, but this was essentially the areas that were expected to experience the most change over the next 20 years, or the community expressed a desire for change. Once those focus areas were defined and vetted through the community, we created a set of alternatives on what changes may look like to provide options. We are now in the stage where we are evaluating and comparing those alternatives and moving towards choosing which preferred alternative to go forward with for the rest of the general There are a few key considerations when looking at these alternative options. One is that part of this process was also to align the general plan boundary with the city limits. Your adopted general plan includes portions of current county jurisdiction, and so part of this update is to align the planning boundary of the general plan with the city limits, so it does not include that unincorporated land. The other was to incorporate the site inventory and the housing unit projections from the ongoing housing element update to make sure we're aligning with what's going on in the housing element update. We also evaluated the capacity of the different sites for development, so looking at how much land is allocated for each land use and what that could potentially produce in the future regarding housing, population, and jobs. And once we had those numbers, we looked at how we might need to rebalance those metrics across the city to better serve the needs going forward. And we also looked at desired community enhancements, so what areas would like to see more jobs, more amenities, what other things could be incorporated to actualize the city's vision. The three citywide alternatives are intended to be citywide. So the idea is to choose one of the three citywide alternatives, and then we can make edits based on council direction within that chosen alternative. If there are strong feelings for each focus area in different directions, however, we can note that down and carry those comments forward to council. I do want to mention, just regarding the metrics provided for each alternative, I really want to emphasize that these are estimates. We looked at a variety of different metrics to gauge capacity going into the future. One was your 2020 existing on-the-ground numbers to serve as a baseline. We looked at what the adopted general plan capacity allowed for, and then what, under each of these alternatives, the net new jobs, population, and housing would have the capacity for. And then the total citywide capacity. These are estimates provided by the amount of land identified for each use and the average person per household or employee per business type. So it assumes housing and non-residential build-out at a realistic capacity, but actual development will depend on a number of other factors, like the market, the developer will, site conditions, things of that nature. So it's a very theoretical exercise that's really intended to be a decision-making tool. And it's also a key data point to look at what the existing on-the-ground numbers are compared to the current adopted capacity, because that helped us look at where we could realign or what to plan for. I think, actually, I have a couple more slides before stopping for questions, but I think this would be a good spot to stop for questions regarding the process.
Well, the system's telling me that I'm currently the active speaker. That's cool. All right. So I did have some questions regarding the process for community engagement. I know we received a letter from a community organization regarding the lack of engagement of specific populations that actually happened to be in my ward, and I'm looking at the overall participation in the process for engagement, and I see 285 responses to an online survey. I'm curious for me, just because we have just under 400,000 residents in the city of Bakersfield, and to only receive 285 responses to an online survey, that should really signal something to the city, and that is that that means is not necessarily sufficient to get the level of engagement that I would think would be necessary to really have some real data points to work from and to really say that you really engage the community. So that's just concerning for me, 285 out of almost 400,000 people, you know, and I don't know what, where we are in the process, and, excuse me, this is my first meeting, I've been out on medical leave. But now, to see this, to come in and see 285, it assumes, number one, that participants have access to technology and computers and internet or what have you, or transport to get to a public source of that, and then, number two, the number is just so low, it's concerning.
I can answer some of that. So those numbers and stuff also are for targeted surveys that we have online, but if you go to our community outreach hub through bakersfield2045.com, you can see, we've hosted 42 events. We have almost 4,000 people that have responded to surveys, which is still for 400,000, not as many as we would like. And there's a map that shows every event area that we've had, hosted events. So we're doing community outreach through social media, through television spots, monthly, if not bimonthly, every two weeks. We're doing as much community outreach as we can, going to the pop-up events. We're paying to go to certain events so we can have pop-up booths and just try to get as much participation as we can, but a lot of it is just limited to people want to volunteer that information. So I believe we're doing what we can, but obviously, we're open to other ideas on how we can do more.
I think we should look at the letter, because I think there were some good suggestions in that letter from the Leadership Council regarding, actually, in communities that are underrepresented, specifically knocking on doors or sending mailers or something of that nature, because obviously, the survey process is not working. And I know that you said we received like 4,000 surveys, but is that on the general plan, like generally, or is that specifically on this land use thing? Because I think you have a very targeted and, like, I guess dissected approach to putting together the pieces of the general plan, and we can't just count the overall number.
And we just recently also, I'll add, that we did an open call for community-based organizations to partner with the city under a contract where there's financial exchange, and that's how we get -- we're using those community-based organizations to go out and also help knock on doors and do everything like that.
They take paper surveys with them, allow people to do the surveys on the spot.
Right, because they know their community sometimes better than city staff.
Absolutely.
So we already, we're already doing that, we're already under contract.
Okay, so those numbers, the numbers that we see here should go up for these surveys and for their participation, or is this already done?
I would hope that everything would go up number-wise on participation, yes.
Okay, so this process is not complete. So we're in the process of getting these numbers real -- can I ask this director a question? What level of participation do you think would sufficiently represent, you know, our constituents?
You know, I have an individual at the RingCon team doing a PhD on this type. Maybe this individual can give me a number. I'm going to ask Ms. Gale to come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Cassandra Gale with RingCon Consultants. So the community engagement process is, should be viewed more as something that's scaffolded throughout the entire general plan. So what Della was referring to on that slide was, yes, very focused on the land use alternatives process, but the overall engagement programming for the general plan is something that is ongoing and meant to build on each phase while providing education points for different topics. So for land use alternatives, those two workshops, the various pop-ups, were intended to receive feedback, but they're also intended to provide an education piece on what is land use, right? Similar to how we're moving into the policy process now, we have an education piece on what is policy, and then we'll do additional surveys and quality what is policy, and then we'll do additional surveys and qualitative data collection to triangulate that information. So, surveys work really well for Bakersfield in some parts of the community, and other parts, we've learned a lot since we've been at this a few years, and that's why we brought on the CBOs on board, to help us get that more one-on-one conversation information to help us round out the rest of this process. So, it's something that builds on each phase, sort of like an ongoing relationship that we have to continue to foster and pivot, so that we're reaching everybody the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neale. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Kader. Ms. Neal, welcome back. We missed your comments. Ms. Neal is much more eloquent than I am about it, because I looked at that slide, too, where you had two workshops and an online survey that didn't seem to produce much. And so, it didn't seem to me that two workshops was enough. And so, I think there needs to be some, you know, updating to this presentation, to show that, you know, you have had more community engagement than you do, because the director was talking about all these other people that we talked to, but it wasn't reflected in this presentation. So, I hope that there will be some revision to that. My questions were, had to do with this, was the reason I wanted to talk early was, well, I'll hear myself talk, but besides that, was when we talked on, and I'm referring to this presentation that you all have, it's on your desk there, and this is what was sent to us in advance. I noticed that you're not really following this exactly, and so, that's why I was confused, because I was jumping around through here. So, your presentation kind of jumps around a little bit. So, in the, on page two, you talk about using this summary, and you say, "Because the city strives for a citywide balance of housing and jobs, the 2045 total is only shown for the citywide summaries, while each focus area illustrates how the breakdown of housing, units, population, and jobs affects that particular focus area." And I was struggling a little bit with that, trying to figure out what you're really saying there, because you talk about moving some alignments that confused me. Can you talk a little bit more about that, please?
Yeah. So, the goal here is to establish a citywide vision for land use in Bakersfield. What would you like to accomplish over the next 20 years, citywide? And then, we dial that into the focus areas and look at how that will reflect in each of the focus areas.
But you talk about, in the next, after that, you talk about rebalancing the land use. So, you talked before about doing some realignment of things, basically to suit the survey. And so, I'm a little concerned with making the boundaries fit the survey, rather than the boundaries fit what we actually do, the way we actually live.
I'm unclear on having the boundaries fit the survey. The focus areas were chosen because they were identified by the community and by staff as areas of change, and some of those, for instance, there may be one area where housing is more of a focus, and so, we focus economic development in another area. And making sure that citywide, there's a balance.
Yeah, I'm not finding my note regarding the alignment, where you changed the alignment. But okay, I'll let that, I'll let that go for now. Yeah, that has to do with what we're going to be considering tonight, but yeah, that helps a little bit. But what is the plan for us tonight? Our plan for us tonight is to review these land use alternatives for each of the categories. You have like three alternatives for each category, and we're supposed to just tell you how we feel about them, or what, what do you want from us?
Yes. So, I'm going, I'm going through the process, and then we'll go through each alternative, looking at the focus areas and how that is reflected for that alternative. And at the end, I would anticipate comments, desired changes to the single alternative that you would like to move forward with and recommend to council.
On page six of your report here, you talk about the adopted land use maps, and you have your category residential, commercial, industrial, and you have the percentages. Is that in each area, or is that a citywide kind of thing?
Citywide.
Citywide. Is there any effort to balance those uses in the individual areas? In other words, to try to get, get away from this core city thing that we do, where, you know, all the commercials in one place and all industrials in another place, and to build more, more complete communities? Like, we got all this land in the southwest that, you know, over the next 20 years is going to blow up. Is it going to continue to be, or is it going to drive it downtown, you know, Truckston Street, you know, do downtown business, and then, you know, we're going to continue to drive out the Wheatbatch Highway for industrial, and then all the houses are going to be in the southwest? Is there any effort or intent to try to say, let's try to consolidate some of this stuff in different areas?
Yes. So, while we were looking at citywide alternatives within each area, we did look at, do they, in order to balance the jobs and the housing and the amenities in that given area, should something be shifted? So, yes, it was, the alternatives are citywide, but within each focus area, we also evaluated that.
Okay. But you also have the fancy words that I don't have, so thank you very much for sharing that. I'll relinquish the floor at this time to anybody else who'd like to ask questions, and I look forward to a discussion about the actual areas that we're going to be talking about.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. This is new technology, so I don't see any other commissioners. Oh, did I? Let me, oh, I have to activate it. Okay, let's just say Commissioner Strickland.
I'll leave.
It's not me, it's technology. I'm dying to hear your comments, please, Commissioner Strickland.
Well, like Commissioner Coleman, I also like to hear myself talk, so I will say, just starting off, I'm kind of in the same opinion. I had notes on this that are going to throw me off the rest of the night, because I don't know when to apply them here, so I may jump back and forth. Can we go back to slide six on the presentation? Oh, my goodness, that's what I look like, huh? All right. Just for a base overview, could you give an example of vehicle miles traveled, climate change, environmental justice, and adoption and resiliency on how that applies into this? Can you just give one or two examples of each?
Yeah. For the most part, I'll say vehicle miles traveled, climate change are both pretty intertwined, because they both involve reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and so, that was kind of what, sorry, I'm trying to see the name tag, and there's a gentleman on the end there.
Commissioner Coleman.
There's a head in the way of the name tag. What he was alluding to is making sure that we're balancing uses within each focus area and having more of a neighborhood approach, rather than, like he said, having all the houses in one location and all the jobs in another location. So, that will, by default, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Regarding environmental justice, this was looking at what polluting land uses may be located near potential housing, and seeing if we could buffer that, or mitigate that, or change that in some way. And as far as adaptation and resiliency, it was comparing with the maps of, for instance, flooding risks, seismic risks, and making sure that we're not putting critical uses in those areas.
Cool. Thank you. And definitely getting before myself on this, but what I would expect is if those are our eight things we're really kind of focusing on in one way or the other, I would expect on each of these alternatives kind of a checkbox to say, or a measles chart, yep, we're hitting this, we're not hitting this, we're hitting this, all the way through, right? And I don't really see that, so it was hard for me, reading alternatives, one, two, three, to really relate them back to this, unless I looked at it myself and said, okay, that's a green area, so that must be these two items. So, it'd be kind of nice to see that. Going on to the workshops and calendars, I'm not going to bemoan all the responses, because I think that's already been done, but I'll add that on there. I will say, I went to Saturday's event, which I think was great, and I appreciated staff for being there and you guys for hosting that. I saw that on KGET maybe two weeks ago. I didn't see it on the city's website, I didn't see it on the Bakersfield 2045, it's not on the calendar there. Upcoming, the 20th, I think there's a tentative. I think there's a tentative virtual on the 20th that I haven't seen, if that's confirmed. It still says tentative on the news article I can see about it. So, my complaint's not the engagement. I consider myself a very online and always connected person, and I saw it because I was reading a news article from two weeks ago. I don't know if anybody else on the commission knew about it, or saw it, or was engaged, and if that's a similar community thing, which I think goes back to Ms. Neal's kind of comment, that maybe there's a way to do that. I don't know if it's mailers, or, you know, I think getting 4,000 people to respond to online surveys and for city stuff, most people don't care. So, I think that's probably, I'm okay with those numbers, it's just more of as workshop to go forward, if this is going to be that ladder structure of constant conversation like we're talking about, maybe a better way to post those on. And then, I think my next question, since we cut a little short, are going to be into alternative use, so I'll yield back on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I still can't see a request to speak. I don't know if that's the software, or if there are nobody, there are no requests to speak?
So, I keep.
I have to keep activating it?
Do you see it now?
Did you just?
Because when I hit it, it says it submitted, and then.
Yeah, there it is. Okay. Yeah. It seems to be working.
Don't press anything until, because I think what happens is.
The clerks manage it.
Oh, perfect. I did not know that. White was not clearing it either, so this is fantastic. All right. There are no other questions. I just had two quick questions. As we move into alternatives, I was just hoping that you could clarify this idea of the focus areas being a microcosm to the city as a whole? Does that mean the land use policy is being updated throughout the city? These are just kind of representative areas that are being studied to sort of personify a larger effort, or really concentrating on revising zoning in nine core areas and leaving the rest of the city as it currently is?
For the most part, it was looking at those nine areas and adjusting the land use in those areas, because those were the ones with the most change.
Okay.
I will say that as part of the housing element update, there will be other changes throughout the city that are not included in those nine areas, and the zoning update would come after this process, and so, that's still an opportunity at that point.
Because, you know, I think change is a very good word for our city. You know, if you look at a map at 1970 versus a map today, you wouldn't recognize the two. And so, I'm just curious how the policy, should there be a 10th neighborhood or an 11th neighborhood that really needs to be studied as well? Is this a model that then could be applied, or do we have to wait for the, you know, 2045 for the next time to address the, you know? Because, you know, our zoning hasn't changed for many, many decades. And so, I'm just wondering, it being so focused and limited, I mean, what are, if other areas reap similar benefits, but are just aren't identified, you know, like the Brundage Corridor is a great example of, there are many Brundage Corridors in our city, and I think we would all want to see Brundage succeed, but we also want to see North Chester succeed, which is the county, but, you know, or see Oswell, or, you know, there's, and so, to me, I'm just curious, since a comprehensive zone change only happens, you know, we're talking 2045, is this a tool that the city can use and adopt and expand out of these core areas without having to do a comprehensive zone update 45 years later?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. So, and I will say that these areas were chosen because they had the potential for the most changes regarding the overall general plan land use designation. The general plan itself and any subsequent zoning updates will be citywide, will look at the entire city. It's not just going to be focused in these areas, right?
Okay, got it. Then that was my question. And then, my second question is, there was a mention of the county and the city in creating a clear line delineation, I think that was mentioned. Bakersfield does have a unique metro in that you could cross the street and be in the county. Is there any partnership with the county? This might be more of a city question, as far as if we're moving towards resiliency, sustainability, reduced greenhouse gases, and then right across the street is business as usual? I mean, does that, is that kind of the process, or is there some collaboration happening between the county and the city to create a more cohesive urban metro?
We will have policies regarding development within the city sphere, and obviously, we would like collaboration with the county, where they would like to collaborate, yes.
And is that currently happening, or that's planned to happen? I don't know.
That's planned to happen.
Okay. Just to clarify. Okay. Commissioner Neal?
One other question, because I did have a question. I know that we were planning to annex a lot of areas into the city. Are those incorporated into the general plan, to the boundaries in this general plan?
So, some of those annexations are, we're actually collaborating with the county right now on those annexations. Some of those are included, and some will be reserved for the county.
Thank you. I see no additional questions at this time, so I think we can proceed with the next portion of the presentation. Yes, it does.
I think this goes to Chair Kader's point, is as I was looking over these areas, I was concerned at why they were so narrowly defined, you know, just like you did from this land corridor, it's a very narrow section, and why it's not a broader view of those communities. Can you address that a little bit?
Yeah. I mean, again, this update will incorporate and take a look at those areas outside of the focus areas. It was just more that the areas within the boundaries were identified for more changes to the land use designations. That is the next topic of discussion. Okay. So, the focus areas were primarily chosen through engagement and input with city staff. So, these were areas where the community expressed a specific desire for change, or change was expected, because it was being driven through the housing element or other city development efforts. It was areas where undeveloped or underutilized land had been identified, so there was an ability to change. Areas where planned or existing transit and infrastructure are present, so there's a capability for that change, and areas that were already experiencing change as well. So, a lot of this was in collaboration with the community, with the, as I mentioned, the focus groups that we held to discuss, my notes, to discuss future trends with development, community organizations, and then what the city is seeing as far as development applications coming in. And I also want to note that these focus areas, as I mentioned earlier, will be, these changes will be guided not just through these land use designation shifts, but also through the policy of the general plan, which will be looked at citywide, not just in these areas.
I have a question. Thank you for allowing this to be interactive. I really appreciate that. Do we study the general plan amendments that were approved over the course of the last, you know, 10 years, 15 years, and look at all of the amendments that we made, and try to, from that data, anticipate, you know, what the community is actually wanting based on all of the requests that have come through?
Yes, that's correct, because when there's general plan amendments and zone changes, we can, we can see how, a trend, I think, we can see how the trends are going for either residential or commercial, dense or residential, and such, yes.
So, this is just a map of where those focus areas are located, I'm sure you're familiar with them, but just for a little bit of context. I mean, if there's any additional questions at this point, this was one of the, like, spots we had assigned for questions, but I think we can just keep going if all the questions have been answered.
Oh, Commissioner Strickland.
Can we go back to the map?
Yeah.
Can we go back to the map? Does RINCON have somewhere in the data set, if I look at like Old Town Kern or Greater City in the Hills, those focus areas are driven, I'm assuming, off the 285 responses plus staff desire, right? Is that what decided these focus areas?
As well as any existing plans.
Is that data set publicly available as to what drove, like, City in the Hills to be one of the focus areas instead of, like, Polo Community, right? Is there, is that data set available showing like, oh, we got 10 respondents for this area, we got one respondent for this, so it became a focus area? Is that an available data point?
We did not post that on the city website, but we can.
Sure, that'd be great. I, I think just in data transparency, right? But anyway, that, that was it.
Your court?
Chair Cader, after, after questions from the dais, it may be appropriate also to take public comment at this time or when you're done.
I was going to ask you how workshops and public comments work, because most public members don't wait for the workshop.
Yeah, typically, it's after the presentation, but since we're being interactive, we would allow the public to comment at the same time.
Sounds good. Well, we're in a question period now, right? So should we, can we start with members of the public?
If you have questions, you can ask.
Yes. Just, I think it would just be about what we've seen, so not about something we haven't, yeah.
And if more questions come along as we, as we move along with the presentation, you can ask questions at a later time as well.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
And if you could state your name, yeah.
My name is Wendell Wesley Jr., community residence at California Senior Housing, where we have a lot of residents that are senior, disabled, and financially disadvantaged, energy disadvantaged. The question is, I haven't heard anything to, about a plan for light rail. Light rail would meet a lot of these criteria. It would get, some people out of their car for entertainment purposes, which would improve the quality of life. It would also serve as a backup if your vehicle breaks down. It would also serve people that don't have vehicles or maybe someone that just got their first DUI and need to get to work. So you're talking about sustainable housing that way, someone to be able to get to work so they can keep their housing. So that's just a short list that a light rail will bring to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sandra Melgosa Placencia, and I am a current policy advocate with Leadership Council. We submitted a letter, and I know y'all have read it, so I won't read through the whole letter, but I first wanted to say I really liked this interactive experience. I think it's great. We should do this for every meeting. And second of all, in relation to community engagement, Leadership Council does work primarily in Southeast, East and Central Bakersfield. That is where the majority of our base is. And we, the first thing I wanted to bring up, and I know we haven't talked about alternatives yet, but under the Brundage Lane Corridor or focus area, there was hardly any information on the alternatives. I believe it was just like one bullet point for alternative one and three, and then two bullet points for alternative two. I really suggest to the city to do stronger community engagement. We thank y'all for partnering with CBOs to kind of get out there, but also wanted to stress concerns over the city partnering with the Downtown Business Association as one of the nonprofits or entities that they partnered with for engagement on the general plan. We really would like to see the city continue partnering with other nonprofits who are present in the MLK area, the Brundage Lane area, and hopefully expand to other areas because we are very disappointed that it is a very narrow area for both MLK and Brundage Lane, which are very predominantly disadvantaged communities that face a bunch of environmental burdens and environmental racism, right? In our letter, we did highlight that we do believe alternative two aligns the most with community as of bringing more parks, but there's also way more that has to be done to ensure that these communities aren't continued to be burdened and that they can actually adapt and be resilient when it comes to climate change. And with that, I will adjourn my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Court?
Before we jump into alternatives, what is going to be our goal? Are we going to pick one better alternative and then pick that at the end of the day? And that will be presented to the city council?
We'll present all three alternatives to the city council, but yes, the, the hope is that there is one alternative that really stands out to you as saying this is Bakersfield's vision, and we can make edits within that one and carry that forward. But we will be presenting all three to the council as well.
Commissioner Neal?
I'm, I'm having a hard time with where we are in the process considering the level of engagement, because I don't, I'm not sure that we can say this is Bakersfield's vision without doing more community engagement first. This may be city staff's vision, right? And the people who've showed up, the few so far, and those, a lot of those people have, you know, a horse in the race, you know, so, but as far as the people, the constituents of the city, I'm, I'm personally not comfortable making a recommendation to city council. I don't know if we have to tonight or what the timeline is without seeing a more robust report on, on community engagement. So that's just where I sit on it. The other thing I want to point out is, if you go back to slide 22, when we're talking about the Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard Corridor, I'm, I'm very grateful to the city for naming it that on commission. I've had some debates about whether or not this portion of what used to be called Cottonwood Road was actually renamed by the city, and it looks like the city is actually adapting the new name. And something has happened that I didn't, I'm not privy to where the city is actually adopting that, so I just want to say thank you to, to the city staff for actually recognizing that area as the Dr. MLK instead of Cottonwood.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up on the question of when we select one of three alternatives, is that per area? We're not picking alternative one for the entire city. We have the flexibility and it's not, though. Is it, it's alternative one all the way through, alternative two all the way through, or alternative three all the way through?
That was the way that we set up the discussion. I do, I do want to emphasize that if there is a strong feeling to do it another way, we're flexible.
Got it. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Cader. I, I just wanted to expand, expand on Mr. Wesley's, Junior's comment, Wendell, regarding, because that was an observation I had, too, is that, you know, we developed this land use plan, but, you know, nowhere in there that I see, that I saw was any provision for a potential light rail system, a circular freeway, or, you know, none of that was in there. So I don't know how you can make a land use decision on these areas without considering how people and commodities are going to get in and out of those areas.
I would note on that, that the general plan also has a circulation element, which were, is where a lot of that will be looked at. So, I mean, is this the cart before the horse? I would say not, because we need to start somewhere, and if we don't start somewhere, we're not going to go anywhere. So I would say the, like, the light rail and the movement of traffic will be evaluated in the circulation element, which we just barely started touching on with Public Works, and there'll be more, obviously, in community engagement with that, too.
Is there some overlay of that? I don't know, I guess I'd be sort of about how you, how you can decide how you're going to use the land if you haven't talked about how you're going to get to it. So I, I, I just feel like it should be like, you know, an overlay one way or the other, so.
But I, I think that to reverse that question, it would be saying is, how am I going to put in light rail if I don't know what type of land uses are going to be there? So I, again, I think this is a good starting point. At least let's, let's discuss this, let's get through this report, and then we can, this information, again, as it was noted, it builds upon everything, and we'll take this and build upon the circulation element, and then if, if we need to come back and revise, we'll come back and revise.
So will we be having input to the circulation element, or are we just doing the land use? Are we going to have all, any input to all those?
All the elements ultimately will, you'll have input on, yes. Absolutely.
And just to clarify, the, the housing element runs at a different cycle than the rest of the general plan, but the rest of the general plan will be adopted together, right? So we are doing these different exercises, but it will all be a single document. So there will be, yeah. And then just to, I mean, I'm sorry, I feel like we've all asked this question and then re-asked it, but the zoning maps that we are looking at in small images tonight are indicative of a strategy that we'll then use to adopt a land use. These are not the literal zone changes that will be in the final report, right? This is a land use exercise to create a philosophy behind how we zone, or is this actually rezoning property at this time?
Yes, no, you're correct. It's a philosophy behind how you rezone. So this is not the zoning map. This is the land use, land use general plan map, which is a higher level. I like the philosophical.
But this is the, the final, this is going to council to become the land use map, right? This is not, these aren't academic exercises, these are actual.
Right.
Making it through the, yeah, okay. I just think contextualizing everything, because it's, it's a little complicated, so I appreciate it. Oh, are there, oh, there's another, Mr. Wesley has another comment?
I just want to say, I like what you said there about how do we know? But I also want to say that, well, we need to be mindful, because I've seen light rails be built. I was in one of those cities where they came in, and it disrupted a lot of businesses. So in situations like that, if we're looking to grow a business district or section in that area, it might be better to have the light rail first, once you have the design, because just, we've all seen what disrupting business can do during COVID. And in that particular city and others, some cities, some businesses weren't able to survive during that process, because people didn't want to drive and be around all that construction, clog traffic. And in the long run, it was great, but some businesses thrived through it and some also failed, so just want to be mindful of that. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify, this is a 20-year vision document, not necessarily, and I appreciate the comments, but it's not getting down to the detail of what do we construct first, the building or the light rail? So again, this is a vision which will build upon what we're discussing, but thank you for those comments.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you. I think that answers the next phase of questions, so should we move on to the alternative one?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you for all of the questions. So alternative one is, the goal here was primarily around preserving existing industry and employment generating land uses, revitalizing urban cores, and looking at transit-oriented employment centers. There's themes across all three of these, but what we were prioritizing for alternative one were these things. We have some numbers here. As I mentioned earlier, these numbers are theoretical exercises on what the capacity would be for this alternative regarding housing units, population and jobs. And we can go into each. My thought here originally was to go through citywide information and then each focus area and then take questions, but as, as needed, let me know if you have questions. So under alternative one, the downtown, downtown core transitions some of the industrial in the downtown to commercial and mixed use. It provides for some mixed use along Chester Boulevard, around the high-speed rail station, and mixed use south of Truxton Avenue near Mill Creek Park. Old Town Kern largely preserves the existing land uses for alternative one. It does add some mixed use near Baker and Montgomery and some other key sites identified in the housing element, and has a commercial corridor along East Truxton to connect to the downtown. Greater City in the Hills, the housing element is driving a lot of medium and high-density housing in this area, so we have some mixed use replacing regional commercial to offer additional amenities and jobs at Kern Canyon and Highway 178 and to better enable transit, and a large commercial center at Morning Drive and Highway 178. For the Rosedale Corridor, this alternative adds a large area of regional commercial south of Rosedale Highway that is currently on existing utility property. It allows increased intensity of the commercial west of Callaway Drive and cleaned up some of the light industrial area just to allow for consistency with the existing uses east of Callaway Drive. Housing Element also has driven some transition in the CSU Bakersfield area of the office space to mixed use for alternative one, and we looked at an opportunity to adapt commercial centers to mixed use as the demand for that allows. And Brundage Lane essentially increases intensity of the commercial along the south side of Brundage Lane. Gosford Southwest, the west side light industrial for this area changes to general commercial and office to help buffer those housing uses there, and then the east side auto dealership along Wyble. We formally designated that to regional commercial, just aligning with what the underlying zoning is or what the existing use is. So that was more of a cleanup. And then there's a potential for mixed use development at Pacheco and Acres. And then Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard area, the northern stretch of this area allows mixed use, changes along the corridor to implement the housing element. This was an area that had some housing-driven changes. Some regional commercial that replaces the industrial that's adjacent to Highway 58, lowering the intensity or lower intensity industrial next to the neighborhoods at Wilson Road and Union Avenue, and then transitions industrial at Fairview and South Union to mixed use. And I'll pause there for any clarifying questions on the first alternative.
I would love some clarity on the, I think it's called public utility or public benefit, like the blue zoning, seems to be a lot of different things, like a PG&E substation, Cal State Bakersfield, Kern County Museum. It seems very hard to analyze a land use map when it could be either a power plant or a university or pseudo-regional park. Is that just to allow flexibility or, I just, it kind of threw me on some of the graphics because it was, they're so centrally located in some of these core areas, but one is a university that's achieving, one means, one is a power plant that nobody can get within 50 feet of, you know, and so one is really bringing people together, one is really disconnecting people, and so is there a reason, like, why, like, the kind of catch-all bag of, can you explain that land use a little bit more?
Yeah, it's really intended to capture government uses, civic uses, utility uses.
Okay. And to me, like, the utility is where it gets a little hard, because public and civic, there's this, let's open a business next to City Hall, let's walk to the, let's have a dense housing next to the university. A PG&E transform station is like a chain link fence, don't cross, don't landscape. You know, the, the way they interact with their neighbors is completely different. So to me, it's kind of weird to have a utility use put into a civic use, other than the fact that they're owned by a public entity.
I don't know how the request to speak works. I've lost my mind. It seems like last time it worked well, and now I just click the button and it goes away immediately. Before, it would say like, oh, you're in the queue, we'll get you, and now it just goes away, so I'm.
I'm just going to throw out Commissioner Strickland is the only commissioner that pops up as well, so either he is winning the participation award or something's not working.
I'm, I'm breaking quorum now. I'm just going to start talking.
So, coughs, I'm okay with that.
Just, just for a general comment, can we go to like slide 25? Just any of them that have a map on it? So going back to the legend for. So going back to the legend from, I'm going to pull this document. There are colors on there that are not on the land use designation legend provided with it. Can you speak to why some areas are shaded and some aren't, but the legend doesn't have the shaded areas? I'll give an example on the northern piece of that, they're shaded purple. There's no shaded purple in the legend, so I was having trouble kind of figuring out some of these zones. Is that saying that it's a new zone type and old? And it's on all the maps.
Oh, okay. So it looks like our, it looks like, so we have the housing sites that are included in the housing element as a blue hatchwork, and when you put that over other colors, it may muddle the colors a bit.
This is a blue and gold dress thing all over again. So that's site included in 2024 Housing Element. Everywhere we see that specific color, when it's on purple. When it's not on purple, it's a different color again, right? Is that the case? So if you go to like 35, I feel like purple wasn't the only color I saw, but maybe it is. Nah, maybe, yeah, like there, I've got, you've got like yellow and green, black and, is that all blue? Is that what's going on there? Like, everything at the bottom of Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard is like black and yellow and blue? Is that just the site included, or the research overlay?
It's the housing site, those are the housing sites.
Okay. Do we have any RTE that's not CSUB, just the high level?
No.
Okay, so I'll ignore that color altogether. The other one that I just kind of struggled with on alternative one in general, I think the high-level summary of that is business-focused, right? I think would be the way to put it. If we're picking only alternative one, or only alternative two, or only alternative three, I'd find it difficult to get anyone in the town to, the city, sorry, the city to back any other alternative, when your summary shows if you go with alternative one, you gain jobs, and if you go with alternative two, you lose 10,000 jobs, and if you go with alternative three, you lose marginal jobs. So I guess I'm struggling with that as a, as a whole. It seems like a citywide commitment to either going fully green or fully, I don't know what color for industrial. So I guess I'm having a little trouble rationalizing each area, because if you go to CSUB, there's job losses, right? Because it's housing for students. If you go to Greater City in the Hills, it's job losses because it's very low residential housing and no density. If you go, but they also get more greenery, right? So I'm having trouble kind of correlating, if I go back to those eight items we talked about on the first part of the presentation, the resiliency, climate change, things like that, are each of these nine focus zones checking those boxes too, each, or is it a company-wide, or city-wide?
There were, I feel like there were a few questions in there, so let me unpack it a little bit.
Sure, 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 sorry.
And then follow up if I'm missing something. So to answer the last question, yes, each of these three alternatives accomplishes all of the necessary goals of the general plan.
Sure.
The alternative one is more about kind of preserving the existing type of industry that's already present in Bakersfield. Whereas the other alternatives might look at shifts, right? And part of that is maybe less office and more retail, which may change how many, how those numbers played out as far as the multiplication of people per square foot for those jobs. And again, this is where I would kind of refer back to what I said earlier about, these are theoretical exercises on the potential overall capacity, and if you compare your 2020 existing numbers, what you actually had in jobs and housing compared to what your adopted general plan had the capacity for, Bakersfield has more than enough capacity for anything that could, that you could want.
Sure.
So you're not really losing jobs, per se. You're lowering the capacity so that you can adjust to other things the city needs because you have more than enough already.
Yeah, and I think I just meant from a public perception, right? At some point, this table goes, I'm a consultant in private practice, so I'm very careful with how things are phrased, and that's one of them, right? No matter, if I were a ratepayer who didn't care, if I looked at, I see that as loss of jobs. It may be reduction in capacity, but it's loss of jobs. So I'm just nervous that alternative one is the only one that really looks good to the average resident. So I don't know if there's a better way to clarify that, or later on, if there's a better way to show that, so that it's, we're not losing jobs, right? Because people are already concerned about that. And then I have one more question, and it was for alternative two, but we're on it, we're looking at it. For Greater City in the Hills, that light green right there in the center that says, it's an open space, right? That's a parking lot with a little tiny dog park on it. What is the definition of open space? Is a parking lot an open space? I think that's a parking lot for the ballpark, right?
That's correct.
And, trust me, they won't let you just drink beer out there in the parking lot, so it ain't an open space to me.
That's correct. That is the parking lot for the rec center and sports fields next door. So technically, because it is a parks use, that could be updated to the open space parks designation. Currently, it is as open space, but I tend to agree that it is, that it is not currently an open space, per se, as you would find next to Kern River or something like that.
Right. And then, and then I just get concerned looking at some of these maps on like, the next open space for Greater City in the Hills, alternative one, is there at the northern tip behind what would eventually be housing developments? I guess it's an open space, but it's really an area for that development. It's not really a City of Bakersfield open space. That's a, that development will eventually consider that their space. Same with the park right there, the, I think that's Greater City in the Hills Park, or whatever it's called. It's in the middle of a housing development community. I guess I'm having trouble rationalizing when we talk about resiliency and open spaces, are these truly open spaces, you know? And then we had another one, if you go to Ward Four, where the Rosedale is, the Walmart, I think the only thing that's covered in Ward Four. There's a park there that's on a utility easement, and it only shows up in, it only shows up as a park for alternative two. Feels like to me, if it's a utility easement, what else are you going to build there? Isn't it always going to be a park? Why is it only an alternative two is it a park? Why couldn't you?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the utility easement on that parcel is for the PG&E power lines from the transformer station just to the north of it. The original land use for, that current, sorry, the current land use is, is the mixed use. On, you know, large-scale, commercial and mixed use developments, you tend to see parking or other, other potential uses for, for that area. So in the, in the economic development, you know, alternative one, which is focused on economic development, we looked to provide a lot of flexibility for that particular landowner to, to develop that, you know, with or without open space extending across the entire easement.
Yeah, I just, I guess I assumed if it's the PG&E utility, there's not a lot you can build on it anyway, right? I would assume, right, if it's a PG&E utility.
You know, parking or other non, you know, parking or storage or that type of thing, non-occupied uses.
So if it's parking, it can be an open space instead.
I want to clarify on that parking with the open space part. We're not saying that parking is designated as open space, it's because that particular parking lot is associated with the open space. It's the parking lot for that open space, so it's just looped into that designation.
Is it, it's the parking lot for the ballpark, or the parking lot for the dog park that's in it? Is it, is the, is it considered?
The one in the Greater City in the Hills?
Yeah, sorry, now we've jumped around. Is it, do we consider that the open space because it connects to a dog park, or because it's the parking for the ballpark? Or the sports field? It's a sports field.
Yeah, it's for the sports field. It's for the sports field, but I will say, just kind of again, thinking of this as like a high-level vision document, even if it was for the dog park, it would still be considered an ancillary use for the dog park, and so we would have still included that.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Commissioner Neal?
Just a quick comment on slide 32. I think I thanked the city too soon about Cottonwood Road. And I just want to just see if someone can get clear on this, but we're doing the same thing where it's Mark Cottonwood Road, but we're calling it MLK Boulevard. Are we going to have like a consistency?
We can take Cottonwood Road off, but it truly is named Cottonwood Road.
Okay.
That portion, that portion of the road is.
So why aren't we calling it the Cottonwood Road Corridor?
Because we like to call it the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor.
But.
So I don't do anything?
And it's my understanding that you are working with your council member to potentially rename that street?
Yeah. So we have to fix that, because I thought, I assumed it was fixed because it's appearing this way, but what I'm, what I'm hearing is not. So, okay.
Now, that, that request needs to be placed to rename the street.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Corr, did you have a comment, or are you just helping me speak? Okay. Thank you, thanks for the help. I did have one on alternative one. So a question I had, and it sort of proliferates throughout the different alternatives, looking at the downtown core, Old Town Kern, the Brundage Lane, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, the, the focus areas that can, that are more central city in nature. I was curious, the limited adoption of a mixed-use flexible zone within an urban neighborhood? It feels like in our last zone, the CC zone, which encompasses most of the downtown core, has been the most successful at allowing different uses and different businesses to kind of populate along a relatively small geographic area, which gives you the mixed use, the different businesses that support each other. And so it's, you know, and looking at like the downtown map, for example, everything west of F is still proposed to be this weird, I live in that neighborhood, and you may be on a single-family home, but it may be zoned R4, or your neighbor may be a C2, or the coffee shop may be an R1, because the zoning was just kind of laid out and with no rhyme or reason to what the use was. And so I was curious, you know, as we look at encouraging active Brundage Lane, active MLK, the downtown core growing to receive the high-speed rail station, Old Town Kern looking more like downtown, why a mixed-use zoning isn't, we are a little bit more prolific in, in just allowing mixed use over a larger geographic area? It seems like we're still kind of holding tight to, well, this intersection can be mixed use, but after that, it goes back to traditional zoning? I just wonder what the, what, what the reasoning was to sort of limit that use?
I wouldn't say necessarily we're trying to limit that use. There are different amounts of mixed use proposed in each of the three alternatives. So some of them will have more than others. And it was also looking at what, what existing uses are on the ground, and making sure we're not going to cause future problems for those uses if we change their zoning on them.
Okay. So you think, so mixed use wouldn't, would provide a hardship on current landowners? Is that?
It depends on what the, it wouldn't necessarily charge it, no. I don't want to, I don't want to give that impression. But for instance, if we make a use a non-conforming use, it can, it can limit what they can do in the future. Whereas mixed use, it is a pretty flexible zone, commercial's a pretty flexible zone. So we use those a little more in areas where that would be appropriate.
And typically, when something is rezoned, when something is rezoned, it's typically grandfather, the existing use is grandfathered typically, right? Why we have animal, animals in the city?
Legal non-conforming?
Yes.
From existing use, if it goes into a zoning that no longer allows it, yes.
Right.
Because to me, I think it just, I mean, my comment on it would just be, it seems like holding that flexible zoning too tight is basically limiting our ability to realize the vision of these corridors as being these vibrant corridors, because anyone outside of a few privileged sites would have to go through a zone change process. And, you know, it's expensive, it's timely, it's not guaranteed, it's not, it just seems a little bit contrary to this idea of creating active zones. Oh, yeah, just be curious, the city's comment on that, yeah. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question, maybe summarize your question?
You know, it's like, looking at Old Town Kern, for example, there's about eight blocks of Old Town Kern that are mixed use in a neighborhood that's about 150, you know, 100 blocks, right? And so, 26, you know? Oh, it's, yeah. So I'm just curious, in the, even just the existing land patterns of Old Town Kern are more mixed use than what we're seeing on this slide? And so my question would be why? And then the slides, the ones that are proposed for mixed use are pretty much already built out with housing authority projects and, you know, heritage buildings. And so why are we so limited on applying mixed use to areas that we've expressed wanting to be mixed-use neighborhoods?
Well, I would say that the purpose of this is to get, garner your feedback. We'll look at all three alternatives, and we'll identify the best alternative for Old Town Kern, and if we think it needs to change to more mixed use, then that's what we'll take forward.
So I just clarify, in the new mixed, it doesn't require mixed use, it just allows mixed use, is that right? Can exclusively residential projects still be built?
That's correct.
And exclusively commercial projects?
That's correct. Mixed use allows for mixed use, but can be either.
Does not require.
That's correct.
So to me, that feels like a pretty safe, you know? I don't know, that's just my, my comments that you are soliciting tonight, so, thank you.
Solicited.
All right, I see no additional comments, and I am now a master at the Request to Speak tab on eScribe, so shall we proceed?
Did you want to proceed, or would you like to take a break? It is up to.
Oh, yeah, it is 7 o'clock. Do you, I'll need a break.
I know we've only been here an hour and a half, which isn't that long. Proceed?
Sure, let's proceed. We'll see, alternative two might be a good, recollect ourselves to.
Okay, so alternative two looks at adding additional park and recreation space throughout the focus areas, looking at more compact design and development, more mixed use, transit accessibility, higher-density development, and mixed-use development in key areas. Alternative two's downtown core looks to transition the industrial area south of Highway 178 to professional office, formally designate civic and governmental offices as public facilities, more commercial focus along the Union Avenue south of the tracks, and more mixed use near the Garcia Circle near High Speed Rail and Columbus Street. Old Town Kern for alternative two has an emphasis on mixed use along Baker Street and Kentucky Street, maintains the industrial along Truxton, and has pocket parks along Baker, Truxton, and Niles, and then also has additional mixed use to implement the housing element cycle. Greater City in the Hills has more emphasis on mixed-use centers at Morning Drive, Highway 178, and Kern Canyon Road. Rosedale Corridor adds opportunities for mixed use throughout the corridor and adds potential park space along that utility right-of-way that we've already discussed, at the Northwest Promenade Center and south of Langley Road. CSU Bakersfield transitions as much of the office space to mixed use as is feasible. Brundage Lane emphasizes mixed use along the north side of Brundage and at the P Street intersection, and has a potential park adjacent to the Kern Island Canal. Gosford Southwest has west-side light industrial that changes to general commercial and office to ease that transition to the residential neighborhood surrounding. Again, we formally designated the auto dealerships to regional commercial to align that use, and has potential park at Acres and Pacheco. And Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard aligns with, a lot of this aligns with the housing element changes. There is less emphasis on expanding commercial in the northern portion, and more emphasis on mixed use, and a potential park at Panama Lane adjacent to Crescent Cemetery. And I will pause there. And I will pause there.
Commissioner Neal?
Has the city staff taken into account any of the recommendations in the letter that we received today from the community-based organization Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability?
We've listened to every letter that LCGA and the PIOP have responded to, whether it's with the housing element or with the rezoning, or even this. But this letter just came in, just this afternoon, so this presentation is not built around that letter, no.
But do you have comments regarding issues raised in the letter?
Which issue would you like for staff to address?
I just want staff to, if staff has any response to the letter.
My response to the letter would be, we will continue to work with LCGA. We met with them and JR earlier this week on some other items. So we'll continue to work with them to address their comments in their letter. I mean, if you want to take a break, I can go through and point everything, but it'll take me a little bit.
The letter came in before the meeting. I know it was late, but considering the level of participation that's displayed in the presentation, I personally would like some feedback from the city on the suggestions, whether they're feasible or not. But I don't want to hold up everybody for that. I do. But I just wanted to understand, you know, if staff had some comments regarding the letter. Besides that, it came in today.
I can generally say that a lot of the, flipping through this, a lot of the recommendations in this letter regarding more parks and green spaces and facilitating healthy food access. Healthy food access would be accommodated under the land use for the commercial and mixed use. And so that would be more of a zoning and program level that would be addressed in the policy, which is the next phase of the general plan. As far as parks and green spaces, I do want to say we've identified areas that look like an easy place to put in parks, but that does not mean those are the only places that parks can go in. So that's another thing we can address with the policy in the next phase of helping to facilitate. I know the city is also in the process of updating the Recreation and Parks Plan, making sure we're aligning with that and facilitating that development and maintenance of parks.
Thank you. I just wanted some sort of feedback from the city.
Commissioner Strickland?
Just two questions. The first one being, is pocket park just a phrase, or is that a technical term?
Some cities have definitions specifically around what is defined as a parket, sorry, pocket park. That's a bit of a tongue twister.
Alliteration, yeah.
I don't believe Bakersfield has a definition for that, so for this case, we're just using it to mean a small-scale park.
Okay, yeah, I think it was, I took my notes on the other one, and now it's, I told you it's a mess. Old Town Kern, I noticed that Alternative 2, which I saw as generally the more green-space alternative, has less parks than Alternative 3, and they both call out additional pocket parks. And the only one I can see is, I don't know the cross-street well enough, Niles and, I guess I don't know the difference, but the purple one there on Alternative 3 flips to a park, and on this one it stays. So I didn't know if pocket park was a defined size, and then why Alternative 3 is more parks than Alternative 2, if that was intended. So that was it. And then regarding city business, or city buildings, we kind of hit on it for the downtown core. Is there any benefit to the city when you change it to a public facility, right, for zoning? How does that change the population and jobs number on the calculations? Because are they the same?
My analyst here is telling me it does not change the calculations.
Same? Okay, yeah, that's it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Corr?
Actually, my question was based on the number of jobs. So in Alternative 2, we're going into negative 9,000 jobs. I didn't see the big difference between Alternative 1 and Alternative 2. Why did we have the significant number of loss in jobs in Number 2?
Just a second to look. We believe it's, a lot of it is related to switching office uses. The ones around CSUB and when you switch things from. So the way we did these calculations, we explained it briefly in the memo, but is using industry standards on how many employees per square foot each type of business estimates that they use. And so office uses, you have more employees per square foot than you do things like industrial and retail. So again, you're not necessarily losing jobs, it's just that you're switching uses to one that has fewer people per square foot.
I'm very curious with that metric, because is there any study on what we need as a city? Because I noticed Alternative 2 and 3 has more housing units, lesser jobs. And we're not really creating jobs, we're not really creating housing units. We're creating space for jobs, we're creating space for housing units. Has there been an analysis on, you know, looking at the land we have, these nine area studies? Do we need to provide better or more housing units? Or, because we could zone everything professional office and have a killer job number, but I don't see a lot of professional offices looking to expand right now.
That is a fantastic question, and the answer is yes. So the housing units are mostly driven by the housing element and what we expect in the future from those housing cycles. The jobs are aligned with an economic market study that the Nadelson Dale Group did as part of this project.
Okay. And then can I ask, Senator Rincon, you get to see a lot of cities. We're somewhat, we have focused goggles as a commission to the city of Bakersfield. Are you seeing, as cities look to the future, that the professional office, dedicated work in a professional setting, cities allocating less space for those uses as they move into the future?
I will give the caveat that I am not an economist, I'm a planner. But I can generally say, across the cities and counties that I work with, yes, that has been a trend.
Thank you. And then are you seeing, similarly, light industrial? I know particularly in a city of our demographic, there are some very exciting job opportunities and less polluting industries that fit under the context of light manufacturing. Are you seeing that being reconsidered in how cities think about it with regards to adjacencies and decent housing next to cleaner industry?
Yes, I think that highly depends on what a given jurisdiction classifies as light industrial. But there is definitely an ongoing conversation as far as the compatibility of surrounding uses.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Strickland had asked about open space. And I was curious, I mean, I think this, I mean, when I think of open space, I think of the protection of natural lands. And there's really only one corridor where the city has aggressively tried to do that. As we look to 2045, is there, and this is maybe a question for staff, because open space is its own element of the general plan. Is the city investigating, kind of expanding, the ability for citizens to experience natural land beyond the Kern River Corridor? So I know City in the Hills had talked about that back in 2008, when it was, you know, when zoning was laid over it.
There is actually a new requirement, SB 1425, that does have us looking at what they call rewilding opportunities. Now, we didn't identify those specifically through this process, because sometimes it's going to be a little more specific than what we would look at here. But it is just identifying areas where we might in the future consider transitioning to open space and allowing that access.
Fantastic. Thank you. Commissioner Neal?
Looking at the City in the Hills focus area, I'm looking at Alternatives 1, 2, and 3. And I believe the purple area, is it purple? Can we find it? Yeah, there it is. The purple, where the, kind of like in a triangle there. Is that where 178 meets Morning Drive? Is that what that purple area is? Does the purple represent commercial?
The purple is mixed use.
Mixed use. And where's the large commercial center at Morning Drive at Highway 178? Which one is, is that on there?
I believe that's the one on the west side, the red.
Okay.
There's mixed use and commercial.
Got it. Okay. The commission remember, we had an application from, because on all three of these alternatives, that area, it looks like it's being designated as commercial. Currently, it's residential.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Currently, that area is zoned R1, right? And we're now in this new plan, all three versions, designating that as commercial space in the general plan.
Apologies, we're conferring with our maps. Oh, yeah, that's Morning Drive. Yeah, apologies. I think we got a little confused on which intersection we were looking at. But the existing use currently is a mixture of office and commercial.
Oh, it is? Okay. I'm just curious if staff recalls, we had an application from Daryl's Mini Storage, and the community showed up for that. And ultimately, that did not pass that application. I'm just trying to understand where on the map that was, on this map.
You see the, towards the northeast, you see that arc in the road there?
Right, it's.
It's in that area.
Half Moon?
The half, yeah, the Half Moon. So you see the purple?
Yes.
Area? That's Masterson on the east side of that. And then that arc area, with inside that arc area or Half Moon area, that's the area that was proposed to be rezoned from residential to commercial.
To commercial. And here, in all three versions, we still have that as residential?
It currently is residential.
Okay, okay. Just wondering, because that's something that we've heard, and people showed up for that. And I just, I see it reflected here. But we are now providing, does this commercial spaces or mixed-use space is in purple? That's already zone commercial?
That's already commercial, that's correct.
Okay, 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 good. Thank you.
I would note, and not to get too far off topic though, that project is not dead. They're actually looking for a no-net-loss property to make up for changing this.
While we're at the site, the planned, there's the plan to redo the alignment of 178 and take it into the mountain. But I think that came up with the Daryl Mini as well. This kind of, this curve, you know, 178 is doing this dramatic spike that it doesn't do right now. Is that still going to be preserved as future freeway space, or is that getting resolved with Caltrans?
Right now, it's going to be preserved as future freeway space. Although the likelihood, in speaking with Caltrans, is no, or at least not in the next 50 years, but that will be preserved.
And then it'll stop at Masterson, and then?
No, it's to go all the way. There's actually, on the east side of Masterson, they've already reserved some of that alignment also.
Interesting, yeah. That was an interesting part of that hearing as well. Okay, my request to speak is cleared, so unless there's any other questions, let's proceed to Alternative 3.
Okay, so Alternative 3 really focuses here on alignment with existing and ongoing efforts, transit accessibility, flexibility to development, and includes the research and development area around CSUB. And we do pull, we pull some concepts from the other two alternatives for this one as well. So the downtown core for Alternative 3 maximizes the mixed use along high-speed rail, Chester, and the industrial area south of Highway 178. It, again, formally designates civic and governmental offices as public facilities, has residential infill north of Highway 178 and east of Chester, and replaces industrial with office and mixed use. Old Town Kern, Alternative 3 is similar to Alternative 2, but we've expanded mixed use along Truckston Avenue, formalized the public facilities designations for public facilities uses, and included some pocket parks. Greater City in the Hills, I do want to note there was a typo here on the slide. It is generally aligned with Alternative 2, but we did add two acres of general commercial and some more mixed use in the Morning Drive Center. Rosedale Corridor generally also aligns with Alternative 2, but with some additional park space along that utility right-of-way at the Northwest Promenade Center and allows for mixed use west of Callaway Drive. CSU Bakersfield maintains the underlying land use designation of office on the areas adjacent to the campus, but then also allows for an overlay to create an area plan that facilitates research and technology uses. Brundage Lane, Alternative 3, that should say Alternative 3. We directly combines Alternative 1 and Alternative 2. Gosford Southwest is similar to Alternative 1, but includes additional mixed use and park designations near Acres. And Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard is similar to Alternative 1, but includes additional mixed use north of Highway 58, cleans up some of the designations on vacant parcels on the northern portion of the Boulevard to allow for more streamlined law consolidations and development, and aligns the designations with the housing element update.
I see no Commissioner questions. Just to clarify, on the Gosford Southwest for Alternative 3, can you highlight where the mixed use is being proposed? Because I just see park, open space.
It's a mistake on the presentation, apologies. It's correct on the memo, however, so it looks like it is. Where is that? East of Acres.
East of Acres, okay.
Yeah, east of Acres is the mixed use, and west of Acres is open space.
Open space, and then, okay. Thank you for clarifying. Commissioner Strickland?
Thank you. I'm going back to paper after this. I just had a question on Alternative 2 and Alternative 3 for Gosford and Coffee. So that's the, I guess that's Gosford area, right? What was that? Rosedale, I'm sorry, Rosedale, Rosedale and Coffee. So Alternative 2 and Alternative 3 are, they're like, they're insignificantly different, I think, I feel like. I don't see much beneficial difference between the two. In the northwest section of that mapping, there's a little bit of zone differences. There's a very small sliver of park, but they're almost identical. What is the key difference between those two, right? What is the, why would we pick 2 over 3 or 3 over 2 for that specific map?
Yeah, I think generally it's important to remember that the way that this was structured initially is to pick one citywide alternative. And so there may not be significant differences between. And so there may not be significant differences between a specific focus area between 2 and 3, but since we had intended for one alternative citywide to be chosen, there are differences in the other focus areas for that alternative.
Right, yeah. I guess then it brings up the point, if there's no real significant difference, and it's pick all of 1, then you could flip 2 and 3 on that one, if you wanted to, and then it doesn't matter for your map, because, I mean, it's, and I think there was another one that was like that. There were two, I, I guess the, I'll restate overall concern, there were a couple areas that seemed like we were just making a second or a third option for the sake of making an option, and that's one of them. It really feels like there's not a second or third option, but I think that was more the statement, so.
Yeah, in some areas, we did have clearer, like, there was clearer community direction, so.
Sure, and I think that was kind of indicative of the letter today, too, is that some areas have lots of direction and lots of notes, and some have a line, but that makes sense. So, thank you so much.
So my question, I, I was just wondering if you could elaborate on the research and development areas, kind of the planned goal of, of that new land use designation?
Yeah, that was in response to a lot of feedback that we got requesting a research, an area to have incubator spaces for research and development that really, really helps with connectivity between the city's economy and CSUB. And so as far as what would go in that, it's, again, it's designed to be sort of an incubator space for research and technology, but that would be to be, to be determined with the development of that overlay.
And I guess, because to me, the challenge with the CSUB area in particular, between Area 2 and 3, is I think a vibrant mixed use community adjacent to a university is always a great win for the city, for the, for the university, for students. But I think research and development associated with the university is also a good win for a university, and so in talking through a, for an alternative, to me, especially with the CSUB area study, I feel like 2 and 3 both present strong visions, and it would be great to see kind of this equal pairing of mixed use in research and develop, like, kind of, I feel like there's a false choice being made between one good idea and another good idea, and I would love to see it more integrated as this mixed use vibrant and research-centered community as a vision, just because they're both really, I think, strong ideas. And then similarly, Alternative 3 references building off existing strengths, and I know there was a visioning done for making downtown Bakersfield in conjunction with the high-speed rail. And similarly, open space ideas and research and development ideas were incorporated as potentially near the high-speed rail site as well. And in Alternative 3, are, are there any opportunities for, you know, there was the idea of the downtown open space ring, there was the idea of this, the high-speed rail being a great conduit to bring ideas and research into our downtown, of incorporating, and I, I feel like the, the site that was selected just has so much undefined land around it, that I think the success is really what we allow and encourage to go there. And so I was just curious if some of those ideas for making downtown, making downtown Bakersfield, I think that's what it's called, yeah, could be more present in the zoning update?
We did, we did reference that plan, and we aligned it pretty, pretty well considering the time scale of the general plan, right? Looking at a 20-year timeline for the general plan, but we did do, open to suggestions on if there's something specific that we missed that you would like to see there, but the intent was to align it pretty closely with that vision.
My, yeah, I guess my suggestion would just be, I think this idea of research and development areas, I feel like the university is one kind of node where that could happen. I think the high-speed rail site is another, because we can bring people into the community from a greater distance, and that was mentioned in the plan. So I don't know if that, because that zone is sort of an overlay zone, right? It's not a specific zone in itself, so.
And I do recall, we had some discussion on where to put that research and development area, and so, I mean, it, it could be either or, or it could potentially be both, it's...
I always like both, but yeah, I think that, and then I would just say, I, I like your nod to pocket parks. I, one of my first projects, I'm an architect here, was a pocket park for a nonprofit, and at that time, the city wouldn't allow it to be called a park, because they didn't recognize anything smaller than five acres, and so it's very exciting to see the acknowledgement and the shift towards green spaces at a micro scale that could really impact central neighborhoods that don't have access to the five-acre tot lot, soccer field, parks of the suburbs, and so I, I appreciate that aspect of both Alternative 2 and 3. It has been a while since public comments, and I would like to extend to the public, you are always welcome during questions and answers, so please, or not answers, questions, we have not come to answers yet. Please state your name and proceed.
Hi, Sandra Melgosa Placencia, current policy advocate with Leadership Council. Not really a comment, but more of a clarifying question. I believe under Brundage Lane, it said that they were going to go under intensity commercial for Alternative 1. I was just wondering what that looked like, or what type of businesses intensity commercial would bring in?
It, it would be more, it's really, it would be going from our, our general commercial, neighborhood commercial, to more regional commercial, to which would allow a little bit more intense commercial-type uses, such as restaurants with drive-throughs are allowed in, in that type of zone and, and such.
Sorry, can I follow up, is that okay?
Yes, please do.
Okay. I guess then my biggest concern that I've heard from residents, and I know it came up in the general plan workshop on Saturday, is that we don't want more fast food restaurants in southeast Bakersfield. It is just Jack-in-the-Box, Wendy's. We want a diversity of different restaurants that aren't too expensive, but are also healthy, right? So we can go out with our family and not be forced to eat McDonald's, right? So if it is going to come with a drive-through, I am a little concerned about that.
And restaurants serving alcohol is allowed. So maybe the drive-through wasn't a good example.
Thank you.
Thank you. You are, sir, two comments.
Yeah, same, but similar concern. Traffic on Brundage is already at a peak, and adding those type of businesses is going to add to the traffic, and that's why light rails are really good in cities that are high densely trafficked already. And you probably wouldn't want to put light rail on Brundage, because if you look at the street, it's very narrow, it's only two lanes, you know, you would have to do what they did at, over there in your area, sir, where they extended the 24 corridor, pissed a lot of people off, but it was, it was a good thing, cost a lot of money, but I don't think the city wants to really go through that again. And so I would suggest small, light businesses, office complexes, you know, because they're close to downtown, and downtown's going to cost you a lot more money. So smaller businesses, you know, like that, and maybe some parks where people say, yeah, you know what, I can't afford downtown, but I can afford to have my business here, would be beneficial and also add growth to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Coleman, or Commissioner Coleman, I do that twice tonight, you are the next speaker.
Okay, thank you, Chair Keter, I appreciate it. So I'm still a little troubled by the notion that, well, let me, let me get back to CSUB, Alternative 3, because it seems to not consider, thank you, the residential we've already approved there, we have a mixed, I guess it's mixed use residential right next to the college that was approved two years ago, that was for some townhouses that we had already approved. And so what's the option there? It would just be grandfathered in, or what's the thought on that? Or is that a dead deal? Okay. Okay. And the other, so that leads me into the, the question, I'm still troubled a little bit by having to pick one alternative for the whole city, and why we can't be a little, because I think our needs are different downtown, and our need, you know, if we want to have a research facilities at Cal State, you know, why we can't pick different alternatives for different areas? And so can you talk about that a little bit, please?
Yeah, again, the intent was to have a citywide vision that kind of carried Bakersfield forward into the future citywide, and having all of these focus areas aligned with that vision. But if the, if the commission feels really strongly about one focus area from a different alternative, then we can, we can take down those comments to swap them or make changes, or go, or go through focus area by focus area.
Because to me, some of the things feel natural, it feels natural to have, you know, research facilities around a, a college, right? And, and maybe we shouldn't look at, you know, what we're doing around B.C., if there's any properties there that could maybe be designated for that, but it just seems natural to me, and I don't know why we have to be exclusive, if we pick one alternative, that goes away, or, I, I just don't, I'm, I'm just struggling with that a little bit. I, I mean, I appreciate all the work you've done on this and trying to, I guess there is a point you've got to start, right? But, you know, to say, okay, well, if we pick Alternative 2, we're giving, and, and Mr. Strickland talked about, oh, we're going to give up jobs, and that's the way it appears here, and that's the way the press is going to print it, right? We picked that alternative, and we gave up a bunch of jobs, and, and that's really not our intent, and so does that prohibit us from picking one alternative over another? And so I, I, I'm a little concerned about that. I don't know if there was a question in there, or more of a comment, so. Thank you.
Your comment was appreciated. Commissioner Strickland?
I, I had a specific question, but we actually, we talked about this over the weekend, but from here, we pick a alternative path, right? Let's say we pick one that shows pocket parks or parks in general. Will RINCON, as a further part of this process, help identify funding sources to pay for those? Because we do have a problem that sometimes we don't actually build the parks that we zone for. We talked about this the other day, though, is that something that can be added into this? Is there already going to be included that RINCON will help identify funding sources for that type of stuff, or climate resiliency, or?
So the next, as I've mentioned, the next phase of the, of this project is to develop the policies, so the strategies that will go into implementing this vision. And as part of that, we do look at what funding is available, and we make suggestions and help line the city up for getting that. I will, again, remind the commission that this is a 20-year document, and so those funding sources may change over the course of 20 years, but we generally try to identify the ones that are present now in the short term, such as grants or development, you know, opportunities, and what potentially might be coming in the future that you could be prepared for taking advantage of.
Okay, but funding sources, whether it's now or 20 years, it is at least included in some way in the future phases of this task?
We make recommendations on what would be good to use, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neal?
I have some comments regarding the three alternatives for the MLK Boulevard area. Specifically, I wanted to know why, why there's still so much designated industrial uses in that area on all three maps?
Some of that was in speaking with, with the council members' vision for this area. Just to the east of here is a good industrial sites, for good, I mean, you have good access on and off 58, and, and some industrial you see right now is actually heavy industrial, and that would be down, downgraded to a li, a little bit lighter industrial.
And it seems like there's a plan to include a lot of housing on these three maps. What's the plan and timeline to fully build out the roadways, so that there aren't circulation issues?
Again, some of that will come with our circulation element when we're reviewing that on, on building out roadways and everything. I know, like, utilities right now, we're, we're looking at new sewer lines to support those housing projects that are coming in, but I, I don't have a timeline for the roads, no.
And thank you for that, I'll look at that when we get there, I guess. And then for the pieces of industrial, designated industrial here, it looks like they face the streetscape, and how will these be, you know, accessible? Is it possible to make these accessible or visible from only the mountain vern, vern inside?
Can you, can you kind of direct me on the map of where you're looking?
So the industrial spaces that face, like, for instance, look at Alternative 3, well, all of them, if you look at the top kind of box with the light gray and dark gray there, and that, that, that's right down the middle of MLK Boulevard, right? And so that would face the streetscape, right? So is there a way to basically fortress? Put it into the plan to fortress that, so that the people in that community are not looking, since there'll be so much housing around there, are not looking at those industrial spaces?
No, I understand the question, thank you for the clarification. So some of that comes with our zoning and the requirements for those zones, so like right now, we have a requirement that if you're in an industrial zone and you're storing material, it cannot be higher than the fence, which would therefore require a higher fence to block anything that's being stored at a greater height. We also have, if you're, if you're near residential or a budding residential, that masonry walls are required, but a lot of that detail comes down to the zoning and not necessarily the general plan that we're here looking at now.
Last question, there are areas designated in, in these three maps, which seem to be very similar as, are they not identical? I think they are. On these three maps, are, are they not identical? Can you tell me the distinctions between them? Because they're looking pretty identical to me. But there are areas designated with an overlay that, that I think that's called site included in the 2024 housing element, with that, with the blue lines overlay, and it looks like those are residential areas that have the blue lines overlaying it, so those were included in our 2024 housing element. Okay, so then there's residential areas here that have not been included in the housing element.
The residential areas that were not included in the housing element are already existing residential uses, so we just carry that over in those cases.
So none of the housing, the residential areas that are not overlaid with blue, all of the, none of those are vacant? I'm just...
It, it may be vacant, but the existing land use in your current general plan has it as residential already.
So why would it not be included in the housing element?
I'm, I'm going to defer to my colleague here, who is working on the housing element.
It may be included toward our capacity in the site's inventory, but it's by default, so the ones that are lined are new sites that we've identified to include in this housing element that distinct, are distinct from previous cycles.
Got it, okay. All right. Thank you for that.
All right, so I need to acknowledge, I don't know how the transition...
So I need to acknowledge, I don't know how the transition works between asking questions and starting to give you all of our opinions about the preferred alternative. I was trying to be smooth about it, and I just thought I'd come out and ask you. Do we just start talking, or what do you?
So we, we have a slide that has our key questions for discussion.
Okay.
So there we go.
That's good. I think these questions are helpful. I think we're providing as much feedback as we can. I always say, our role as a commission is to ask questions, to be present, to be a member of the public that agrees to show up and talk about issues. So talk about what, any questions you have. I think I'll start. One thing that I thought was really impactful, and thank you, Ms. Melgosia Placencia. I think this, Brundage Lane is a fantastic example of needing to see, and I may harp on this a lot, so I apologize to my commissioners, these, these central district corridors as being more than just a C2 or a C1 designation. Brundage Lane does not have the car capacity to be a major retail northwest promenade competitor where people from all over the city are coming. It would, it would overwhelm infrastructure. And so what's left are these exclusively commercial zones that really only work for a fast food restaurant to pop up, because this, the law is too small to be, the market, the neighborhood doesn't have the right household median income. And so I think to me, it's, these zoning conversations become very personal to urban neighborhoods, because what the land that's left really does only work for a Jack in the Box drive-through, because it's easy to build, it's quick to erect, it can close and become an Arby's the next day. And so to me, you know, this tool of zoning and creating mixed use along these corridors becomes a way of just future guarding our central neighborhoods that, to allow uses like small-scale grocers, thoughtful housing projects, be them affordable, be them market rate, to really infuse life into these corridors. Because I think that the, the five-acre exclusively commercial property that's not in the hottest submarket of our city is really destined to be a use that maybe creates some shortcomings for these neighborhoods. And so I think allowing more innovative use, more creative use to be easily accessible and the norm instead of the exception that has to come before us and then go before a, a hearing and another hearing, to me feels like a, a very confident step in one part of a very complex puzzle about how our city cast a vision of how we move forward. Now I'll say, secondly, I just really appreciate when we get into the Rosedale Highway, the City and the Hills, the Acres and Pacheco intersections, is because I think we're a city that has grown to where, as Commissioner Coleman mentioned, it isn't feasible that every resident is going to come downtown and do their business and then go back to their neighborhood. The city is too large. And so I think as we think about Rosedale, as we think about South Bakersfield, around the auto mall, City and the Hills, these communities are becoming neighborhoods in themselves, and they need a place where they can center, where they can gather, that isn't just a restaurant, or a Jack in the Box, or an Arby's, or, you know. And so I think to me, the, starting to provide the opportunity for the, a density adjacent to an open space that you can imagine becomes kind of the de facto town center for Acres and Pacheco, to me is a really exciting, again, nod in this idea that we want to be a city that moves forward and provides opportunities for our residents to experience the city in our true size. You know, we're half a million people. These amenities, these places for social interaction, these densities, you know, residents of Bakersfield should be able to feel those and experience those, not just in the downtown core, but in their neighborhood. So I appreciate those two elements of alternative two and three. I kind of have in my mind where I'm going, but again, I just think this idea of adapting to make uses that will achieve what we want for our city more easily achievable is a positive move forward. So thank you for your presentation. And Commissioner Strickland?
I, I'm going to echo a lot of that. I appreciate the presentation. I, like, I really enjoyed Saturday, the workshop. I really think what RINCON is doing is great, very well structured, very informative. When I bemoan the lack of engagement from the community, it's more of a community's lost kind of deal, right? You really can learn a lot by going to those, and you really get a good chance to see the dedication and passion that you guys have for this. So very appreciative. Going back to the alternatives, as Chair Kader said, I, I'm the same way. I live in northwest Bakersfield. I shop across the street from my house. I have dinner within the same shopping area. I don't come downtown much, except for to go to Casey Steakhouse, or, no shout out, or, or to come here, right? I really try and stay to my area. I go to the park, I have friends in that area. And then I look at like the Brundage Lane corridor, as, as mentioned, on the alternative maps, just in this small strip section, two and three really seem like the best way to give, give that kind of community area. One really just looks like it's focused on another Jack in the Box or another commercial. Two and three start putting parks in the areas, and, and those would be the ones I would lean towards if we're kind of making decisions. But I would struggle on making blanket decisions, right? So kind of hope when we get to the selection process, or however the city wants to do it, maybe we could talk about going through each one, one at a time, approving what we think, and then, as a consultant myself, no offense, giving you that data and you guys figure it out from there, right? Instead of making us pick one, two, or three, my suggestion would be let us pick one, or two, or three. Maybe it comes out that it's all twos, right? Who knows? But just a suggestion. So that was it, and thank you so much for your time.
Do we want to just go through each focus area and pick one? Would that be helpful?
I think that sounds like a great guiding principle. I'm up for that. Yeah, it's a good logical way. All right. You're not activated. Let's see. You're up. Commissioner Coleman, you're up.
Thank you. All right. So I, I like what Chair Kader was talking about. You know, we talked about that we're, you know, a community of 500,000 people, but, you know, the rate we're growing by 2045 will be a million people. I don't think that's unreasonable to expect we're going to double in that 20-year period of time. This is still the most inexpensive place to have a house in, in Southern California, so I think we're going to continue to grow. So it's important that we address this. But to Ms. Placencia's point about, you know, the neighbors not wanting the fast food, not anymore the fast food restaurants, I, I agree with you to some degree. You know, we see these commercial plans that we're seeing, and, you know, the, the first thing they do, they line up six fast food restaurants along the major thoroughfare, and then they throw in some shopping center behind it. But the thing we have to remember is that all of this is still market-driven, and there is no market for sit-down restaurants right now. And nobody, very few people are building fast food, or sit-down restaurants. There seems to be this emphasis on these drive-through restaurants. I don't like it, but that's just the way it is. And as long as, you know, we're a market-driven society, it's going to continue to be that But I like the, I like the developing the parcels so that we have the flexibility. This is kind of what you were talking about, is it gives them the flexibility to build a, you know, a sit-down restaurant next to some other use that maybe we didn't see before. So I, I think it's important to include these mixed-use alternatives. As far as, you know, which alternative is better, I, I don't, I don't know that I can say one or three, one, two, or three is better for the whole community. I think that we need to have discussion about each particular one. You asked about changes to make within that preferred alternative. You know, for me, the research, you know, facilities need to be considered where they're, where they're important. And, and you talk about other considerations, it's just how, how it remains flexible so that we can adapt as the markets change over the next 20 years, so. So yeah, from this point, I would like to go into talking about each one. I would really like to be able to see them on the screen, the three options. And, and we didn't get it presented that way. You got one option, and then we talk about it, and we go to the other option. It'd be really nice to see those presented in some way, and maybe that's not possible tonight. But I don't know that we're going to be able to resolve any of this tonight either, so.
Has the report, are you available to present the report? Because I think that was how it was organized in the.
We have to actually open the report in the agenda?
Yeah, if you go, if you go to the 7A Impresses.
It's, it's organized by strategy area, or focus area?
I don't know if that's opening or not.
Go to the land use alternative summary.
Yeah. The land use alternative summary. Yeah.
That's what the, so if you look at the key changes to make that. Yeah, that's the goal, right? Yeah. All right. So if we, if we look at each alternative, or each focus area, we'll do the three alternatives, discuss pros cons, and then hope that it creates a very neat cohesive list for.
And, and you know, it's not like we're necessarily voting, so a consensus would be nice, but it's not required. We can say, for instance, all the wards except for Ward 7 preferred alternative one, Ward 7 preferred alternative two.
Okay. I think the best way is, let's, let's just dive in and see what happens with number one.
Yeah, I agree. So we'll, we'll start with focus area one?
Yes. That sounds fantastic. All right. Are you going to pull it up, or are you, are you able to pull up the maps?
I can pull up one of the alternatives.
Okay. Yeah, let's start with alternative one.
And then, and then we'll just kind of go from there.
Downtown is identified as study area one, so we'll start there.
So the map is only up, just for reference, I'll just leave it on alternative three. So if you look, excuse me, if you look at what was given on your screens as the attachment, you should be able to compare your one, two, three.
Commissioners, don't be biased by the clearly selected alternative by Mr. Johnson. Yeah, please remain objective in your comments and response. Yeah. All right. Who would like to start us off with thoughts and comments?
I can.
Oh, Commissioner Cor.
For the downtown core, I'm more leaning towards alternative three in addition to more mixed use along north of Garcia Circle, where the high-speed train station is going to be.
Is it alternative three?
Alternative three, yes. In addition of more mixed use along Garcia Circle.
And, and my, two and three, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments on, okay. I would generally agree. I think alternative three, I like the idea of, to me, I feel like a, one thing I would, I think to Commissioner Cor's, where the mixed use is applied north of Garcia Circle, it seems tied a little close to high-speed rail. You know, looking at the 34th Street stretch that leads between the hospital and the high-speed rail, feels like that could be a more activated mixed-use core, as well as as you go north to the open space of the Kern River. It feels like a more mixed-use neighborhood adjacent to Chester seems appropriate. And so, yeah, but, but to me, I would also advocate, I like the inclusion of, it's very subtle, but there's a little open space provided at the northeastern edge of downtown that's not currently there, and I think that's a nice strategy. And, yeah. And then I would just say, I think research and development, that high-speed rail, I think is going to provide the ability for us to connect to larger regions in California in a way that we never could. And I think having innovation and research at, at the nexus of that would allow us to be, to really grow from that connection. I have like eight screens up. I have no sympathy for you.
I have seven screens, sorry.
All right. Good push again. Commissioner Biddle? Commissioner Strickland is up.
I defer to Commissioner Biddle, it's her, it's her ward.
I was just going to mirror everybody else. I was, I was happy with three. I think that anytime that we get more of the mixed use in these areas, we're really opening it up to the community to decide what they need in the future. So mixed use is my favorite, and I think that seeing all the purple on here makes me very happy, so I go with number three, too.
Fantastic. Commissioner Strickland?
Sure, I'm, I'm three as well. Director Johnson, are we able to pull up the other report? The, the summary one instead of the presentation? Or are you stuck in the PowerPoint only?
I'm stuck in the PowerPoint.
Okay, no worries, no worries. So I like alternative three best, and I will say, the reason is, on kind of the east side around 178, there's almost an implicit natural connection. There's a park on the south side of 178 on the east, and then above that, there's that larger green space. Sorry, I think I went with them like, there's a larger green space. Like, it almost gives like a pseudo-connection between the two sides with green and open space. So that specifically is why I like it. I think mixed use is kind of on all of them. You know, this one's pretty consistent for open space and mixed. But I really like that kind of connection through downtown. It almost makes me think that if, you, you can't, because 178's there, but you're almost on both sides. It's like you're joining the two parts of the area. So I really like that. I think that's a great kind of use of the map, and whoever put that one together, good job, I like it.
For the most, the high-speed rail, for the most part, follows 204, but it does, really, what we're concerned about, let's just say, is up to F Street, so just the, the northern part. High-speed rail state from Bakersfield down to Lancaster-Palmdale area is still being evaluated.
So, but isn't, isn't the high-speed rail come in at like 48 feet?
Ninety, ninety-six feet.
Just a, just a slight higher.
Okay, so how does that affect those other mixed-use properties there at, what is that, that, well, the Garcia Circle, basically?
Well, I would say right now, the Garcia Circle's not going to really be impacted too much by the high-speed rail, although we would like to, we are reevaluating the traffic flow in this area as part of the high-speed rail station. But right now, again, that section of the, of the line is, is still being considered.
All right. Thank you.
To me, I would say one, so I think, so in considering key changes that would, that would make the preferred alternative stronger, is the high-speed rail currently, or recently held in a station area plan meeting. And one of the challenges of the site is it's very far away from everything else in downtown. And if you look at a 15-minute walk circle from the station, Chester, like where Garcia Circle is, is about a 15-minute walk from the high-speed rail station itself. F Street is a much more walkable connection to the high-speed rail station. And what I see on this map is F Street being the very edge of the mixed-use zone. To me, I think where the high-speed rail was decided to go is that, that F Street corridor needs to become more of a main street, because it is a more realistic walkable connection to the high-speed rail station. Chester is actually pretty far. And so, I mean, it plays an important part, because it is the civic boulevard of our city, but I think, you know, F Street being, you know, and, yeah, because, yeah, I would think that would strengthen the map if we're putting in those recommendations. So we've heard, are there any other commissioners wishing to speak? So, we've heard, are there any other commissioners wishing to speak on this alternative? So it seems like we've reached a consensus on what each preferred, are there any other key changes that you'd like to see made? I'm just going to look back and forth, we're, we're going to keep it informal, it's working better than this. And then are there any considerations or concerns we should take into account, other than what's listed? Oh, yeah, I think I mentioned, yeah. I think 34th Street, there is a vision plan in place to connect, to connect the hospital to the, to Chester, and that also seems like an area that, where this mixed use in this neighborhood idea wasn't really translated as well, so, thank you. Okay, with that being said, I'll let the downtown guy get off downtown and move off to other parts of the city. So we should move to Old Town Kern. This is study area 2.
Does that say she...
There was a consensus, yeah.
Yes, that's absolutely fine, but again, we're not looking for a response from everyone. It's, it's taking your feedback forward.
I feel like organizing via these questions seems really helpful to me, so I think maybe for the future studies, just, if we could just say what our best alternative is, and then we can go into changes and concerns, that way we can kind of talk about it quickly, and then we can go into, yep, does that work for everyone? All right, so who wants to start us off on Old Town Kern? And a preferred alternative? Commissioner Strickland?
Thank you, yeah, you called my name, and I didn't hear it somehow. Yeah, so to me, it's, it's 2 or 3 still, right? I really like the mixed use, and I especially like the pairing of the mixed use with public facility. I'd probably go with 3. What I would kind of ask is, you know, this seems like a good use for pocket parks, and, and I think it's probably 3 just because of that. I don't know if there's any, I guess this is back to a question, is there any key advantages between 2 and 3 that are easy to overlook that we should be considering, right? Other than there's a little bit more mixed use on the southwest side? Is there anything else that's kind of key difference for 2 and 3?
It's really just the additional mixed use.
Okay, then, then my opinion would be 3 for the additional mixed use, and again, I like how, if you go from the southwest side up, the mixed use seems to connect the zones within the focus area, so it looks like they're connected areas, so 3 for me.
All right, any other commissioners?
Yeah, I, I see a trend in preference for as much mixed use as possible, because we want to be flexible for however the markets develop. You know, this area here represents some very blighted areas, and then we need, but the industrial that we have is also blighted, so we need to be able to have the, the flexibility to do whatever, you know, a developer chooses to want to do there, and so, I guess I, I agree, I would like to see more park in that area, certainly, and I guess Alternative 3 gives you the most amount of park. But, but when we, when we get down to the actual zoning and actually reserving some of this land, I think I would like to see more green space in this area especially, because there is none now, and it's very dense with housing, so we, we need to find a way. I think the pocket parks are perfect, you know, even, you know, where you have an abandoned house, and maybe it's been torn down, and it's made into a little green space, maybe it's not big enough to play baseball on, but it might be big enough to have a little, you know, little sitting area or something, I don't know what that is exactly, but... Am I rambling now? Okay.
I agree with Commissioner Coleman, Alternative 3 is for me as well.
Question, Neil, did you want to? Yeah, I think 3 is for me as well. I guess just one thing that I would note is, the mixed-use zone translates into a regional, a general commercial zone along Niles and along Baker, and the current character of both of those streets is a combination of retail and residential. And so to me, it's a little concerning translating that to straight commercial, because there'll be a lot of non-conforming uses, and I think in a neighborhood that is, where we want to encourage economic activity, someone coming in and building a fourplex should be celebrated, not out of compliance with zoning. And so to me, keeping Niles and Baker as kind of a mixed-use corridor, because that's how they currently are built, feel like, again, it gives the neighborhood more resiliency in the future, because it gives them more flexibility on how to grow. Any more comments on map or study area? I've called it like 800 things tonight, I apologize. Study area 2, seeing none, let's move to area 3, City and Hills.
I prefer Alternative 3 for City and the Hills, because there's more parks and green spaces, and additionally, some of the currently designated commercial space is now designated for mixed use, so I like that.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
For option 2, you've got, what is the resource or urban reserve at the north portion near the park towards, what is, what is that physically? The light blue, it printed weird, I guess. Is that professional office? Is that, it's like a cyan instead?
Yeah, that is currently designated as an oil and petroleum use, and so we did not.
Well, but on the other map, you marked it as an open space, so, so options, Alternative 1 and 3, it's an open space, and alternative, I guess, I don't know, I'm colorblind?
Well, that...
Well, that's alternative, what's Alternative 2?
Oh, wait. Sorry, are you referring to the one at the far north border?
Far north, yeah, just below the Green Park.
I was looking at the wrong one.
Because you've got Alternative 2, it changes color, and I don't know what...
That's a, that's a housing site, it's the Housing Overlay.
So that's Housing Overlay, the blue hashed one on top of what?
And you're talking on the northeast of this map?
Yeah, I should have brought my pointer from home, but yeah, the, the very north, very north, dead north of the map, you've got horizontal Green Park, and then just to the southwest of that, you've got a light cyan and/or teal, or chanted clear.
Yeah, we'll look into that a little further, we have a, we have a couple of thoughts, but without having our, like, extensive notes and spreadsheets in front of us, we're not quite certain on that. If you have a preference for that, I would love to hear it, though.
Well, if it's oil, I don't want to put a park on it, and if it's housing, I probably don't want to put a park on it. I, I will say, I don't like the commercial to the north, I think, I'm assuming, I'm a regional commercial to the north, so it's down to 2 and 3. I thought 3 had an overlay for housing, so if 3 is a park in that north section, and it's more greener and open space, then I'll go with 3. Under duress, my decision is 3.
Can I ask a question about this particular, this particular zone? In all that housing, was there no other commercial planned inside any of that housing? Because if that's the case, then I prefer Plan 2 or Plan 3, because we need the flexibility to have some more commercial business options, and all that, that was always been a challenge for the people that were the first people to live out in that canyon area, that, you know, if you forgot to get, you know, milk on your way home, it was, you know, an hour journey by the time you drove back into town and got to the store and came back, and so I'm, I'm a little surprised that there wasn't more commercial planned, because considering the density of the housing, I mean, there's, there are a lot of houses in that area. There, there's like, from my recollection, there are 12,000 houses out there that were planned, so... So I think I stuck a question in the middle of that comment, so, which was, was there no other commercial planned out in this area?
Yeah, a lot of this area was based around what we already know the trend will be for the 20, for the next 20 years, and the areas that we identified are the ones where we most see a likely that those would go in based on developer interest and existing development.
You're imagining that possibly there'll be a grocery store or something out there?
Correct, right, that, well, those would be the areas where that would be most concentrated.
If that's the case, then I'd prefer Option 2 or 3, because you have a little bit of that mixed use to the, to the west, that you don't have on Alternative 1.
Yeah, and I, I want to piggyback on Commissioner Coleman's comments. We do prefer mixed use, but I, it was clarified earlier that for this area in particular, we had the community show up on a particular agenda item that I mentioned earlier, and they said, we need commercial space, we need grocery stores, we need this and that. And because we clarified earlier that these mixed-use areas don't have to be both residential and commercial, someone could potentially, I don't know why they would, come in here and build just all housing, and that would basically, you know, make it expensive for a, a commercial developer in the area to want to come in and now have to get a general plan change for already demarked residential area. So we might want to consider, even though Alternative 3, to me, looks the best, maybe deciding whether we want to lock in some commercial space in that big purple triangle. And also, I did say that I prefer Area 3, and I typically will prefer green spaces. However, considering the density of residential, like, the amount of residential housing here, that upper north green box, which is currently, per our current, current plan, commercial space, we might want to consider leaving that as commercial space, so that there could be convenience stores or a drugstore or something of that nature, where the residents in that area don't have to come all the way down to, so for, like, neighborhood stores, for, for instance, so, just something for us to consider.
And I would note, as Commissioner Coleman said earlier, a lot of this is driven by the market. The city has approached for years now to get a major supermarket out in this area, and there's just not enough rooftops to, to get the interest of, of major supermarkets.
So then the city's philosophy behind creating a mixed-use zone would be to add rooftops for the commercial uses. How can we protect those spaces from becoming just residential uses? If we go with this mixed-use plan, can we? Can, is, can we, can we make an overlay zone for this area specifically that would limit, that would require that if you do build in this area under the mixed-use plan, you have to also have a commercial use? I don't know if we can, but if that's something that we can do, or put in some sort of measure like that to make sure this area, the objective that we have behind marking this mixed use in the first place is actually, you know, realized?
I mean, we, we can look at that, I mean, the mixed use is really, I mean, ideally, we want a true mixed use, but the fact is, is it, it may work in certain areas, and it may not work in, in other areas, so we, we can take your feedback and we can go with that, but I, I'm not sure how we would zone something mixed-use, but then limit or require a certain portion of that mixed use be either commercial or residential.
And I think that's what our problem is right now, is that we're, we're using this mixed, mixed-use term as open, right? And what we really need is truly mixed use. We need, you know, a parcel that has a, a commercial element, and maybe a residential element, or a temporary housing element, or something that are using that space. So, we're, I think we're using this mixed term, mixed-use term a little broader than we'd really like it to be, because we can't make somebody, you know, Commissioner Biddle and I met with developers at the East Hills, City and Lights, and they just don't want to do mixed use, they just don't want to do it. And I think it's because developers are here, these developers aren't used to doing that. You know, if you were in the Bay Area, they'd be like, yeah, we got to build some commercial, we need to put some apartments up above, or we need to have a little motel, hotel on the site, but our developers right now aren't thinking that. I don't know how we make them think that, other than, you know, having these discussions every time they come along, but, so I don't know if maybe we're using this mixed-use term too broadly.
And, and that's a good point, because I, I would note that mixed use has a minimum density, which, which is 20.1 acres, or 20.1 dwelling units an acre minimum for the MX1, so it's not like you can put a fourplex and a gas station, that's not mixed use. In that case, the residential wouldn't be allowed, because it's not enough density. So, again, the mixed use is intended more, I mean, ideally, you would have office space on the bottom, coffee shops and stuff like that, and then you would have more apartment style going up above. So I, I would caution that mixed use is not small homes.
Well, and I would, so, I think there's this property, and then just that conversation in general, like, I think to me, like, a neighborhood mixed use, it feels like those are all, like, we created a problem, right? Is that we've created a zone that doesn't pan out with what we need it to do, and so I would say if the density is too high to make it successful in neighborhoods, then we, maybe we need a neighborhood mixed use that is scaled to what would hap, you know, that, that would just be my case on, because I feel like we've created the mixed use, and if it's not meeting our needs, then we didn't create it very well, you know? It's like, you know, and, and so, unless, yeah, but then I, I would say on this site, to me, listening to the other commissioners, I feel like the mixed-use zoning at that intersection was overlaid at too zoomed out of a view, because basically, we've created the look of a town center with no possible way for a pedestrian to cross safely to get to these different sites, because we have a freeway, meeting a highway, meeting a looparound with a Chevron gas station in the middle, and we called it a mixed-use center, and that is the scariest place to walk across, you know, it's scary to drive...
Yeah.
Well, even worse, because this is, you know, these are, these are regulated roads where you cannot have interchanges at a pedestrian-walking scale. So to me, I'd be curious on this map, if that denser housing project that's adjacent to the largest mixed-use site, and there was sort of an actual center that was not cut off by highways and roads where you couldn't just saunter across the road to go to a wine bar, you know, without dying. Just because to me, like, that, that island especially, like, nobody is going to be able to get to that in a human-scale, complete streets way, because the roads are regulated by Caltrans, not the city of Bakersfield. And so to me, I think a clustered community center at that location is fantastic, it just feels like splitting it by a highway and a freeway and a looparound feels short-sighted. Yeah. Whereas if everything was to the north, you have that City and Hill development that has some green space and some permeability, and you really could build a, yeah, like if that was the green space, and then these two were not, you know, and then maybe those become true commercial, you know? That's a thought, yeah.
So the alternative preferred is?
3.
3?
3.
I think it was 3, but with his comments heavily bolded, because they do make sense, right?
Got it, understand.
And also, I made the comment about the commercial space up top for the neighborhood.
Yep.
All right, we're already through three maps, we'll be home by midnight, let's go. Oh, yeah, oh, yes, we promised a break, I'm so sorry to everyone. Five-minute break?
When does that promise?
Oh, actually, Mr. Johnson kind of like teased it, and then I said, oh, we'll get to that. All right, five-minute break, can we do 8:25 reconvene? Five-minute break?
Yeah, yeah, 5 minutes is, is, oh, yeah, I thought you were going to say 25-minute break. break. I said it's a little extensive.
I'm gonna go eat dinner. I'll come right back.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll reconvene at 8:26. All right, I think we are, the five-minute time has eclipsed. If we can gather our seats, only 20 more maps to go. Oh, you're gonna get snacks? Go get snacks. I think we were talking, we have moved on to the Rosedale Corridor, which is map or study area four. Who wants to kick us off? Our resident Northwest resident, Commissioner Schramm.
So, just so I'm aware with staff, I think they're already planning on Rosedale and Coffey, that, the big blue spot. Is that already planned to be something? Is that, that's not the now, right? That's the current old PG&E substation that's going to stay that way forever, right?
A portion of it, yes. But around Rosedale Highway, well, I'll say south of Rosedale Highway, west of Coffey, we're doing an environmental document for some commercial.
And that's that big purported planned shopping center, right?
Alternative two.
I'm sorry?
Is, that's that big reported shopping center?
The, yeah, where the green open space is, is Bakersfield Commons site.
Got it, got it. I am either/or on two or three. I will go three again, just because, just on the north side of Rosedale, west of Coffey, there's a little more green space at the backside. I like it. And I do like, compared to one that we mix a mixed zone with some light commercial, so we kind of, or heavy commercial. So I like the mixing within those as well. So I'm going to go three again, but I picked two on the next one, whatever it is.
We have a second?
Three is three. It's already attached to that. It's already.
All right. Are there any? I think, yeah, three seems to be the murmur of the dais.
With no adjustments?
Any adjustments?
No.
Does that conflict with the current plan for that?
That area south of the railroad tracks and just the Brimhall is probably going to die anyway.
That, the area south of the railroad tracks, you're talking to Bakersfield Commons? They actually have some plans in to modify, to add some residential.
My one comment on the Rosedale is I think the, so there is that shopping center plan on the southwest corner of Cal, but I think there's sort of this mixed-use zone emerging, but the path between the two is not very well-connected right now. So I do think as we look into the circulation element, creating better linkages across the railroad track and around the PG&E substation, transformer station, to create like a more thoughtful linkage between the two zones would be something I think the circulation element would benefit from.
Then also, an additional comment right now between the PG&E substation and the residential area to the right, to the, there, on alternative two, there's a green space there as a buffer that we don't see on alternative three. Can you, can we add that green space to alternative three? So if you look at alternative two, there's a buffer green space between the PG&E substation and the residential. Can we add that to alternative three?
Good catch. I didn't see that at all. Didn't even see it.
Nice little paintbrush stroke.
Kind of a high-level question. A sliver of park like that, what would you envision, or what would, I guess, Rincon, what would you typically see be built there? Is that?
I can tell you this, that the road alignment there is, calls for a freeway, or a railroad crossing, and, no, over.
Over?
But again, that will be further evaluated at the circulation element and whether or not that's something we want for this area. But that's been part of the constraints of some of the developers to include Bakersfield Commons because they would have to go over the tracks. And so that green space right now is really for, what's the correct term, chaircater?
An easement?
No, not the easement, but because they have to go wider.
Oh, like?
Yeah, like, it's for the right-of-way.
Right-of-way, yeah.
Yeah, but.
Separation of grades.
Separation grade, yes. Thank you, Director Burns.
My development bingo is not on my game right now. All right, so I heard, three, 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 three. All right. With no additional comments, shall we move to map five?
I really like alternative two, to kind of throw us off the chasing threes for this one. I like having more mixed use right there in that area. I think there's a decent amount of professional office space already going, especially with major corporate businesses leaving professional office spaces. I don't think that isolating it and keeping it, that would be beneficial. I think having mixed use would be most beneficial for that area. So that's my two cents on that one.
I think, I'm sorry to jump on anybody else there. I kind of prefer alternative three, believe it or not, which gives us a little, which kind of designates some of that space around the campus to be research and development kind of stuff. It allows for, you said some of the existing facilities that are already constructed and does leave some options to add some more in the future.
And just to, because you mentioned it earlier when we were talking about these specific maps, could we not make the comment that we could do mixed use? And I don't know if there's an overlay you could put, but you can see both benefits of, it'd be really nice if CSUB got research facilities in, right? And we talk about all the time is how do we increase education and making a research area within Bakersfield, but also mixed use is probably more likely to be developed. Is there a way to do one with an overlay so that you're really making two and three? Could we do two, but with a three overlay so you could do mixed use or research in those specific areas?
Well, don't they both have the exact same amount of research and development, two and three? The only difference between the two is the fact that one is more designated office space and one has more mixed-use space?
Am I on the wrong color again?
I mean, am I reading this wrong?
Yeah, we had only put the overlay on alternative three, and then the specifics of that one were to be defined through the policy and further zoning updates, but there is not any reason why your recommendation cannot be to do alternative two with the mixed use with the overlay. The overlay could go under, go over any use that's suitable.
Then I agree.
And just to clarify, he's right, there's the same amount of research. I'm going to go home and throw away my printer. It's no good. If anyone has a, if anyone would like a printer, you let me know. I got a free one for you.
Printers are getting broken.
Office space.
Yeah, I just think this is a really strong idea. I, again, I'm deferring to the circulation element too much, but I've always thought communal media could be a really effective Main Street for a university, you know, just this not campus but campus life space. I was curious, I know when Cal State did their master plan, the parcels of Cal State are like directly adjacent to communal media, were sort of preserved for public-private partnerships of research style. It was like complementary campus uses. It's like an office building that served as a Southwest campus for BC, as an example. There's a museum planned. Is there any working with CSUB to, for them to sort of engage this vision on that side of their property as well still?
We are in communicate, we have been talking to CSUB and have had a few meetings with them on what their plan is, and the feedback that we've gotten from the university is that they believe our process will be ahead of theirs, and so we're just kind of collaborating to make sure we're mutually incorporating that vision.
Cool. That was, so I think it was two with the three overlay, right? And then? Do you want to make your green space question? All right.
Brundage Lane.
So two with an overlay. Next, we're on Brundage Lane.
I guess my original question on this one was why it was limited to, you know, basically two blocks, north-south, and only from 99 to Union when that whole Brundage corridor goes all the way out to at least Mount Vernon or beyond, and whether we shouldn't be looking at it in a larger scale.
Concur. Great point, yeah. It's such a weird.
Is it possible to expand that area at this point?
If you have, if there are specific recommendations on what you would like to see change in that added area, then we can consider that.
Well, part of the problem is that on this area that you have highlighted in Brundage, we have some lot constrictions? Is that the word?
Yeah, that's the word you got.
Yeah, okay. Whereas once you get east of Union Avenue, you start to get a little larger parcels of land to work with. And so in order to meet some of these other things that people say they want, we probably should incorporate that before it gets, you know, because you already have, I think once you get past Union Avenue, you have a recycling yard, and then even beyond that, there's the Brundage Lane Navigation Center. I just think it should all be kind of thought about in one, in one plan. Yeah, the recycling yard is there, it's unsightly, but it's there, and, you know, how do you incorporate that into other things you want to do there?
Well, how about if you make an alternative selection, and then we can look at expanding that area and then adjusting accordingly?
So can we say we like alternative two or three or whatever, but want a, this is number five, so number five, A is, you know, the rest of the So number five A is, you know, the rest of the street?
How, how far east are you looking to go, to Mount Vernon?
How far can you go?
MLK?
Now, that makes a little bit of sense, right? Because MLK has been a, an island, right?
Essentially, the, that area, it would tie those two focus areas together.
I like that a lot.
Yeah, when you were saying that, my, it, I thought about the MLK map, because it has that same density at the top as you're in central Bakersfield, and it moves out to how it becomes a neighborhood, and it becomes smaller-scale houses, you know? It has a similar vibe.
Man, whatever. You don't get into the recycle or anything, you get to keep it somewhat clear.
So would that be alternative three?
Still be looking for an alternative?
Alternative three?
Three?
With an extension down to MLK, because three combines one and two.
Just, just on a discussion point, now, maybe the color, so.
That printer, yeah.
And I hate that our, our public left, but they had good points that that area is regional commercial, regional commercial, regional commercial, and I don't see any of these options that aren't regional commercial, right? Unless, again, colors could be wrong, but all three options are pretty heavy. Looking at the entrance onto the 99 from the 58, I wouldn't think you'd want one or three to have regional commercial right there. I'd want that to be lighter, I would think. I'm almost, I don't like either map in that regard. I'd, I'd like two. I guess two, to reduce the regional commercial right there at the freeway, but I'd almost like to protect that area a little bit more and not have as much regional commercial. I'd really like to just extend the lighter shaded commercial throughout this whole section.
Well, to me, the plan feels a little lopsided, because we have a good, like a reimagined zoning to the north, and then business as usual to the south, and it just feels like that's a very weird urban form. Because you, you can't really have great place-making on one side, and then the wiener sits all the swap meet, the kind of existing land pattern to the south. There's not a great example of that urban form being like a vital, so to me, there's like a, you start with this oleander-adjacent density of mixed use. I just don't understand why it doesn't cross Brundage Street. Because it, like a streetscape project that's only one-sided is, is just a weird, it's kind of weird to me. Like, yeah, if this is like this vibrant core, then why doesn't it cross the street? Yeah. Well, just, just be like here, you know?
Okay, got it.
Like, why isn't this just like commercials? Yeah. There should, like, if we're going to make it more neighborhood-serving space, it should just be compatible.
Does that address your concern?
I, if I had a concern, it'd be more towards two than three or one.
Because of this versus?
Because of this versus this, right? I don't want, and I think they both have the same comment, is your fronted street, if I go look at it, I think there's a Taco Bell there now. I've never eaten there, but there's a Taco Bell right there, there's a Carl's right before it. I guess the other alternative two does address that, you know, there's aren't just fast food or, fast food-adjacent type businesses.
Does Charcater's comment to make those designations south of Brundage in this focus area to mixed use address your concern?
I think so, yeah, I think that would address it.
So the areas that are currently marked on alternative?
Three or two?
Three.
Three, three as regional commercial, the red zones that are south of Brundage, to make those purple zones.
Yeah.
All the way down, because it stops here at South H.
Yeah, I don't want to speak too far into that if we're going to ask them to expand the zone and stuff like that. I think that would change anyway, but yeah, regionally, I just want to make sure I'm not, I'm not picking mixed use for, what Commissioner Coleman said earlier, it's not just because it's easier to deal with, there's a specific reason why I don't want regional commercial in that area, and it just seems like mixed use would be the better solution to that.
So alternative three with the mixed use, I'm sorry, the regional commercial red zones from Oak down to South H, changing all the red zones south of Brundage in that area to purple zones, mixed-use zones?
Yes, I would like that.
Well, I think that speaks to the, you know, one of the goals of being transit-connected or more transit-ready, is I think to create a transit corridor, you need customers that are within a walking zone of the transit stops, and I feel like, so you have to create the right land pattern before we can get. I feel like, yeah, I feel like, as long as they want to do it on one side, then I guess. Yeah, it just kind of depends on their vision, you know? Because you just think about how it is now, which is how it's owned here. But this is, the painting is this kind of end of a neighborhood, you know, oleander, these row houses, and then this like little shops and restaurants and, well, apartments. Yeah, just like, it's like two or three-floor apartments, corner store, you know? Yeah, like, any of the, like, they may.
So, I mean, we heard your comments, was there more? I'm sorry?
Oh.
Okay, I just.
We're just drawing some street sections, talking about.
Yeah, and I would note that this slide is mislabeled, so this is actually alternative three for Brundage Lane, if you're, if you're looking at this slide.
What we're trying to look at is to see whether that recommendation for mixed use in the regional commercial zones should extend down past South H on both sides of Brundage, or not?
Because I guess my question is, the city's investing significant resources to create a complete street on H Street in Chester that will take people from 58 into downtown. And so that, to me, feels like a confident nod towards like a walkable mixed-use character. But then, as you get to those two prime streets, the land use goes back to a more suburban-style. Because I know there is an Albertson's there right now, which is a great resource, we wouldn't want to lose that. But it, it's just a more suburban zoning pattern, but at the same time, we're spending $20 million to make a street that is walkable and bikeable. But to me, it feels like this corridor, the nod of studying it, the nod of making it more community-serving is to make it more active. And so to me, it feels like this whole zone would want to be more, kind of like what MLK is showing, where MLK has confidently mixed use in its urban core, and then as it moves into a more suburban context, it becomes a little bit more low-scale. Yeah. I think that would, that would be my comment, which was rambling at best, so I apologize for that. It's also 848. I know, it's, yeah. Brundage in A, yes, yeah.
I don't want regional commercial, but tonight.
Do as we say, not as we do, yeah. Okay, so we, is, it was, was that rambling enough to be kind of cohesive? All right. In the Chester, yeah.
Okay, so I think the consensus is alternative three. Again, with the area on the south side of Brundage, from Oak to South H, that is currently regional commercial, changing those to mixed use.
And did we agree to have an option that connected the rest of Brundage Lane to the Mall Pet?
Yes, and then just an expansion of this focus area, expansion of the focus area down to MLK to see what the city has a vision for, for that area.
A smaller than them of a mile, yeah.
Now, do you need a change order from us, or is that?
We understand your comments.
It's addressed to Paul Johnson at the end. All right. Moving right along, Gosford, southwest.
I live in this area, drive this area 1,000 times a year, have business and property in this area. I firmly am in love with alternative three for this area. I think it's going to bring what's been missing to this area, especially along Pacheco and what's occurring there. I, I really like alternative three for that a lot.
Might I ask a question on alternative three? The two blue, I've given up at this point if my color's right or not, but what I think is public facilities, what are those on alternative three? Because I see they're common for the lower one, but the northern one is only on alternative three.
The northern triangle, I believe, is a federal office building, and then I'm not quite sure what the bottom, the bottom is. We would have to look that up.
Is, is it a mistake that it's not a blue triangle on the north on all three? Or is that intentional to turn a federal building into light industrial? Although, depending on who you ask, they probably already are.
The, the existing land use currently is light industrial, and alternative three, we formalized that designation.
Okay, yeah, then, then I, I concur.
I agree with Commissioner Bashir Tash, I think it's a great addition to, that mixed-use park adjacency is a great addition to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, is that where they put like a bike path next to irrigation canal, or they're talking about, like a walking path?
It's been, it's been there for a few years now, but because Union Pacific doesn't regulate their railroads, it's become a transient pathway that nobody really wants to frequent at all. Yeah.
That was, I think we're all.
Yeah, we can move on.
Alternative three, let's move on. MLK.
So for this, for this area, I like alternative two, but adopting some of the mixed-use spaces from the other alternatives, specifically the mixed-use spaces, let's see here. That, on alternative three, that, the little, I guess, top part, there's a triangle on the bottom-left of that little stick part up, up top, making that little triangle a mixed-use zone. And also, also down MLK Boulevard, there is a, on option three, what is it, option three that I like? Option three, there's a, that little blue square right next to the word cottonwood, that parcel there to the right with a mixed-use zone there, adopting, adopting that. And then also. I'm sorry, I think I like number three. Okay.
Other than what's wrong with it, it's great.
Yeah.
Just while you're looking at that, just a quick question.
Is the assumption that all the blue buildings on here need to be formalized as public facilities? And if they're blue on here, you're just doing what you should be doing?
Yes, that's correct, we're just realigning the land use with what's already there.
So if we have something that's blue, is it not advisable to change it to mixed use or something else? Because it's a public facility today? Aren't we just, if it's a federal building today and we say, hey, we'll make it mixed use instead, it's not mixed use, right, it's a federal building?
Correct, it's, it's not something that we would expect the use to change within the lifespan of this plan.
Right, so that may just be something to look at, because there's a lot of federal buildings in that area, and I'm worried that if we make them mixed use, because it would be better for the area, if they're not truly able to become mixed use, then it doesn't solve the problem I think you're trying to fix, which is putting mixed use in the area, right?
Yeah, I, I would like to see all of the mixed-use spaces in number two, adopting three, but moving all the mixed-use spaces from number two into number three.
What's the, what's the story on that panhandle that you have there? What's on the east side of that, that little dotted line you have? It's a big, it looks like empty parcels. Does anybody know? I'm just not sure why we narrowed it out right there. I get it why you don't have it to the left, it's all residential, you can't do anything about it anyway, but to the east, I'm not sure why we can't incorporate that in our plan.
Are you talking just north of 58?
Just north of 58, right there on the east side of that.
That's the BLNC and all the warehousing? North of 58, east of there, correct?
Yes. So. So we don't want to influence how that's developed in the future? That's all run down, if I remember right.
We have a lot of interest in redeveloping that industrial portion, taking some of those older warehouses out. Plus, again, that's where our Brundage Lane Navigation Center is, and the city's doing some work in there.
That's where the navigation center is at? I didn't realize it was that side of the.
The navigation center is just east of MLK.
Okay.
West of Washington Street.
Okay. Well, I think that makes the point, though, we really like to see that Brundage Lane tied into the MLK here. I mean, we're talking about, not that far, map size, it's this much. But I, I think that we should be looking at how it all, how it all works together. That's all I have to say about it. Otherwise, I like, I like, I like this alternative three.
If, if I had comments on any of this for alternative three, looking at it, the park due south, I think is, that's MLK Park, right? At the bottom of the map?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, you know, they let you just bring alcohol in here, so I. So, okay, I guess my only comment then, and that's the last of a comment, is I was thinking, wow, I'm way off. I would like to see a little bit more green space if we're taking in community comments. So the community and the council, I'm assuming, put MLK Boulevard on here to be intentional about directing the effort to improve the area. That's just an assumption, no answer on that one. I, I would like to just keep that in mind, that maybe a little more green space where feasible. If we go with three, we've got the existing down south towards Panama, we've got the smaller section top, and it looks like there's one that's overlaid potentially in the center. I don't know if there's a place to fit it, and I don't think I have the required brain power to say where I'd like it, but that would just be my comment. I also like three, but I would like just a little more either green or open space. And then the only other question I had was urban reserve, I think on the bottom south, the, I think I called it Chanticleer earlier today. Urban reserve, what is the intention of an urban reserve area? I think, I think one's resource and one's urban reserve, or?
So, throughout the land use designation consolidation process, the feedback that we received from city staff was that the resource-intensive agriculture designation was going to be consolidated into an urban reserve, just as a more generalized terminology for land that would eventually be developed into urban, you know, urban development.
So like, is that a farm? A small?
Right, currently used either active in agriculture, or its last active use was agriculture.
Okay, it's a horse farm, thank you, yeah, horse farm, yeah, I'd, I'd vote keep the horse farm then, thank you.
I just want to agree with Commissioner Strickland's, that is a large mass of land that does not have any green spaces. So I would agree on taking a look and seeing where we can fit that.
I would note, towards that southern end, there's a local developer, and this area is kind of becoming known as the new communities of Del Oro, or the communities of the new Del Oro. There's some pretty impressive housing going to be put in here, and those, those housing developments will have parks within those developments, and not necessarily set aside what you see here.
So is the intent that now that you have these zones, that that will drive streetscape improvements and other plans the city has? Because, you know, quite frankly, MLK Boulevard really needs to be redone. I know you're doing some of it in the current budget here, but the rest of it all needs to be done, so. So is the idea that these little zones are gonna drive future planning by the city as far as, as far as acquiring properties, eminent domain if necessary, street improvements, that kind of thing? Is that the idea?
It's a combination of, so we have, again, the land use map, and then the policies that will come in the next phase that we'll be developing. And so this land use map represents the vision for what the city would like to accomplish, and we will, the policies will then kind of lay out how to accomplish that. Some of that may be acquisition of land, some of it may be development agreements. There's a variety of ways that can be accomplished.
Can I ask a broader question? Because everybody talks about master-planned communities, and you, and we have a lot of cities in California that are master-planned, and, you know, the buildings are similar, and, you know, they have certain architectural styles, and, you know, it's really nice, and a lot of landscaping stuff. How does that differ from what we're doing?
I mean, it's a very similar process. We're doing it on a citywide level and driven by community, you know, community input and, you know, everything that we've heard from the community, but it is a very similar, a master plan is sort of a developer-driven, more localized version.
Thank you. So I think the consensus was map three with the... With, yeah, with two, with the mixed-use components of two incorporating it.
Can I add the comment, the green spaces that we're probably looking for? Because I see some on the top and the bottom of this focus area, but in the middle, where we have some more dense residential area, I mean, we're gonna have more bodies and no parks there. That's where we're looking. I don't know what the distance between Brundage Lane and Panama Lane is, but if we could focus on trying to add the green spaces in, in the middle of that zone where we have the orange, which are the head, more dense residential.
All right. I think with that, dare we give a confident what our preferred alternative is citywide? Or will we just take, do you think those comments give you what you need to go to council? Okay. Fantastic. Good job, everyone. Mr. Johnson, you?
I just want to thank everybody for their input. We appreciate that, and we have what we need, and if you're ready, you can move on to the next item.
Fantastic. Madam Clerk, oh, thank you again for your presentation. Thank you for bearing with us with our comments, and thank you for working to make a better Bakersfield. With that, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, communications.
Does staff have any more communications?
Yeah, just, again, I would like to thank Rincon. They've been, they've been great working with us for the last few years, and a few more years ahead. Hopefully not that long, that we, so we can finish up, is what I mean.
Till 2040, till 2045, is that the?
Maybe. Other than that, we do have our next meeting on September 5th.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, commission comments.
Any commissioner have any comments? If not, on behalf of the commission, I will just say thank you so much, Rincon Consulting. Thank you for all your work and for the conversation tonight, and good luck in council. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 10, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 9:04. Have a great evening.